Okay, we're live. I will go to my clerk for roll call, Jennifer.
Thank you, your worship. Morning, everyone. Welcome to the September eleventh Committee of the Whole Meeting. I'm Jennifer Connor, Clerk of Romero Township. I'll begin with roll call of council. Mayor Clark?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Bell?
Present.
Councillor Snatch?
Present.
Councillor Fisher?
Present.
Councillor Tu You?
Present.
Councillor Gough?
Present.
Councillor Bell?
Present.
Thank you.
This meeting is being streamed live on the Township of Romero YouTube channel. Be advised that by attending a public meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the Township of Romero, you are consenting to your image, voice, and comments being recorded, and they will form part of the recording. The Chair, CAO, and/or Clerk have the discretion and authority to terminate or interrupt the live streaming in exceptional circumstances where the content of debate is considered inappropriate to be published. Attendees are advised that they may be subject to legal action if their actions result in inappropriate behavior and/or comments.
Okay, so I'll ask if there's a disclosure of your interest, any member of council. I can't imagine any, but if you find yourself in that situation later, please declare it. And then we do have one deputation, John Mascaren is here, but I will hand it over to my CAO to do the introduction and a brief summary.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, members of council, those residents are in the gallery. I'm very pleased today, Mr. Mayor. In a moment, I'll introduce a colleague of mine, Mr. John Mascaren. John will be providing an overview, a midterm governance update focused on governance and some case law material, a municipal law refresh. Members of council, I'm sure this is hitting home. This is about midterm of your mandate. Many organizations, certainly the one that I previously served in, took an opportunity to provide mid-year refresh. Not only from an orientation perspective at your get-go, but also mid-year, and perhaps as other pieces of legislation come down the pipe, an opportunity to provide an update for council. I would like to introduce my colleague who I've known for well over a decade and a half. I've been very blessed to have been able to work with with John. Mr. Mascaren is a partner with Erdan Burles. I'll spend a few minutes providing an overview of what Mr. Mascaren brings to the table. It is understood across the province of Ontario, the experience, the depth, the expertise that Mr. Mascaren brings to the table regarding municipal law and governance. In fact, from a practice perspective in Erdan Burles, John serves many municipalities focused in areas of local government, municipal law, development, and land use, land use planning. For those of you that have not seen Mr. Mascaren, he does have a face for television and for radio. John is frequently asked for comments on matters that bubble up at Queens Park, or for that matter, down in the city, or other municipal jurisdictions. John serves not only many municipalities as a municipal solicitor in those areas of practice. John also is an IC, a closed-meeting investigator, and serves as a municipal ombudsman. John finished law at Ausgood Hall. He's been practicing for a few years. I won't say when you were called to the bar. Were the, Mr. Mayor, a significant accomplishment and recognition by Mr. Mascaren back in 2023? John was awarded the Barnett Kushner Award of Excellence in municipal law. A significant recognition for Mr. Mascaren by his peers in practice. He's a prolific writer. In fact, Clerk Connor, I and Jennifer, most of the folks that are our peers, regularly review Mr. Mascaren and his partner Chris Williams' Bible with respect to the Municipal Act, an annotated Municipal Act. Invaluable from a staff perspective, and many councillors across the province also refer to that. John does not sleep. He's an editor-in-chief of the Municipal Planning Law Report, a number of other publications. And from an engagement and support of the profession, John has spent many years at the Ausgood Hall JD program, providing land use planning law courses, and continues since 2014 in the municipal law program. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am so fortunate to have had the opportunity to work with Mr. Mascaren, not only as in my former employee, as a municipal solicitor and counsel, but also to have seen many of Mr. Mascaren's orientation presentations, mid-year cycles, and John, you have, over the course of your career, provided many presentations to staff professional organizations. I know whether it's today, Mr. Mayor, or subsequent this week or next week, a number of my staff colleagues here will be looking at the recording. And I know that there will be takeaways from that for them from John's presentation. Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Mascaren.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and thank you, Robin, for that very generous introduction. I should maybe fully disclose that you're my agent. You're part-time. It's my pleasure to be here today, and when Robin asked me if I would be willing to do this, I said absolutely. In fact, I said I'm doing it for a number of councils who are asking for like a midterm refresher. They just like to know. Again, we were engaged. We were elected two years ago, and we'd like to know what are the rules now that we've been in doing what we do? So I'm hoping that this will be fruitful and engaging for you. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm in your hands. I'm happy to take questions throughout. I also want to respect council's time, and if you prefer that I just go through my presentation and take questions at the end, that's fine, but I'll be completely frank with you. I would prefer to get questions throughout. I find that just a little more engaging, and perhaps you won't feel so distant from me if you have a question and you just really want to ask it. I'll, I'll see to whatever you'd like to do.
Well, I'll let you share the questions. If you see a hand come up, then, sir.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a presentation. I'm going to see if I can actually call it up and share it on the screen now. So, Amber, I don't see the share button anywhere.
Terrific. Thank you. I am a better lawyer than I am an IT technician, so. So here's my presentation, Council Governance Update, and I've indicated to your clerk and your deputy clerk. By all means, they could make this available to you if you'd like to have a copy afterwards. So let me see if I can scroll through my introduction. I'm going to start with Ian Rogers, who wrote this encyclopedic work back in 1959, if you can believe it. The Law of Canadian Municipal Corporations, it's been cited by the Supreme Court of Canada, by the appellate courts, and all other courts and jurisdictions. He did a significant amendment back in 1972, when I was just the wee lad, not quite reading it yet, and it's been updated continuously since, even though Mr. Rogers passed away. So this quote here is, I think, the theme that I want to go back to in speaking to you today. "While serving on the council, members are under a duty to act in the best interests of the corporation and the citizens they represent." Now, you might be saying to yourself, hold on, whose interests are we looking after? Why the corporation? Why the citizens? A municipality is a municipal corporation, and if you look at the definition of municipality in the Municipal Act, in section one, it says, municipality means a geographic area whose inhabitants are incorporated. So, one, you act in the best interest of the municipal corporation, but also the residents, because you're a municipal corporation. You're not a business corporation. That's a very different thing, and I will speak to that in just a moment. So remember, bottom line, what you have to do is you have to consider the residents of your municipality, your own fellow council members, because you are a member of an elected assembly, and you have to act in the best interest of them, not it of them, okay? So here is where I'm going to go today. Just a quick, quick outline for you. I'm going to talk about roles and responsibilities of council as the governing body of the municipality. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to talk about you as the head of council, and you're also the warden of Simcoe County, so it'll apply in both instances. The responsibilities, roles, obligations, duties, authorities of an individual member of council. I'm going to switch over completely, talk about the municipal administration, and then talk about the council-staff relationship, because ultimately, my comment will be that in order to ultimately serve your residents and the corporation, you have to work together as members of council, together with the administration. A municipality won't function if one's working great and the other isn't. It just won't. You have to work together, and how does that work? Also, I asked Robin this question is, would you like to know, would the members like to know, what did they do when they have dual or multiple roles? Because that often happens, and I'll tell you, I've been a municipal lawyer for 34 of my 35 years, and I had more questions last term about, well, what do I do when I'm a board member? Or I'm a committee member on another body? What do I do? Who do I owe my obligations to? And I'll try to explain that to you, try to break it down. Hopefully, it'll help. And then, if you'd like, Mr. Mayor, happy to have a little break at that point. There's a natural break. I want to talk about some areas where council members influence and have maybe perceived influence, real influence, and areas where they shouldn't be having any influence. So I'll talk about some specific areas in the latter half. So that's my quick outline of where I'm going today. So why don't we just start with council? You all must know, you ran for council, you were all elected. The council is the governing body, the most important decision-making body at the local level, right? Council exercises executive powers. That means you can implement policies, you can implement programs, you can put in place a number of things to do at your municipality as council. You also have legislative powers. You can pass bylaws and resolutions, for instance, zoning bylaws, site plan control bylaw under the Planning Act, site alteration bylaw under the Municipal Act. You can designate an area as an area of control of heritage conservation under the Ontario Conservation Act. Sorry, Ontario Heritage Act. Those are legislative powers. And then, in a couple of very limited areas, you also act as a quasi-judicial body. Very, very rarely, but you do. For instance, if a person is required to pay a development charge and they're not happy with it, they don't feel the quantum is correct, the bylaw hasn't been applied correctly, or there's a credit owing that they haven't received, they can bring an applicant, a complaint to you, and you act as council, but in a slightly different capacity. You act as a quasi-judicial body, because you're a hearing body at that point. And the rules on bias change. Did you know that as a member of council, you are entitled to have a bias? Many people will say, you're biased, you can't do this. In fact, that's not quite correct. The Supreme Court of Canada, in two decisions in 1990, said very clearly, the role of a municipal councillor is to represent its citizens, the citizens of the municipality. And you are allowed to take firm positions on things at council. So just think about that. The principles of administrative law say, if you go in front of a decision-making body, and I've just said, council is the most important decision-making body, you are entitled to have a fair opportunity to speak to that council, to that body. And that body can't have any kind of bias. That rule doesn't apply for municipal councils. Why? Because you're representatives, and you are allowed to hear someone make a delegation and to say, I completely agree, council, with what that person said. I think we should do exactly what that lady has indicated, or what that representative has said. You're allowed to say the opposite, and most administrative lawyers would say, that's a little weird, because they're supposed to be making a decision, but they're standing up saying, I agree with this, or I disagree with this, or I oppose it, I support it. You are actually allowed to do that. That's called the closed-meeting test, the closed, sorry, the closed-mind test. The closed-mind test says, if you're coming in front of council, because council acts primarily as an executive or legislative body, council members are allowed to form some prejudgments. The test is, you just cannot have a closed mind on the matter. And I wrote a paper on it. It was the first published paper that I ever did. I took on the Supreme Court of Canada. Probably not the wisest thing to do, and I said, this sets an impossible test. How are you supposed to prove that someone has a closed mind? Rick O'Connor, the longtime clerk and city solicitor in Ottawa, wrote a paper just almost contemporaneously with mine, who argued the same position. Interestingly enough, the Saskatchewan Court of Appeal had an opportunity to look at both of those papers on a matter where there was an allegation that the council member was biased. And the court said, well, you know, we've read Mascaren and O'Connor's papers. We get the point, but you know what? They're wrong. It doesn't set an impossible test. It sets an incredibly high threshold test. And what happened in that case, you probably, without even knowing any of the facts, the council member went and told the media, I don't care what I hear, I'm not going to change my mind. And the court said, there, we have proof. Said that. Now, this is usually something that I say in orientation to councils, and I did at a municipality last term. Wouldn't you know, I had told the, I told the council, just don't tell anyone, you've made up your mind on it. That's exactly what the member said. He essentially disqualified himself and put the council decision in jeopardy. So all to say is, you have an ability to state your preferences, to state your biases, as long as you don't have a closed mind as to what's happening at council. The second bullet, the second full bullet here, says, council is an elected assembly and acts as a collective body. Always remember that, as an individual member of council, you're just part of a collective assembly. And your power, and I'm going to keep reiterating this, is in trying to persuade your other members of council to do something along with you, to reach a majority. Because how does council act? You can only have a formal meeting when you have a majority of council, a quorum of council, and it's a majority vote, right? Ultimately, that's what's done, and usually in an open public session. There are some exceptions. You are, of course, allowed to meet for 14 specific subject matter exceptions in a closed meeting, and you can make substantive decisions in a closed meeting in a particular way, okay? But typically, everything's done in an open public session. The role of council, it's set out in section 224. I'm not going to belabor it. You see it on the screen. You can read it. It says what it says. This is not the most important decision in the world, but it distills down into two very quick points, something that I'm going to talk about. The University Village in Guelph case. In Ontario, the decision-making powers of municipality is given to the municipal council, and it is to exercise those powers by bylaw. Now, that's not actually absolutely correct, and I actually argued that point in court last year. The other side argued the municipality did not pass a bylaw. That's the only way it could do something. We argued, actually, that's not the only way that a municipality can do something, and I'll go to the second point. So look at section five. The powers of municipality shall be exercised by its council. And two, the powers can be exercised, shall be exercised by bylaw, but look at the trailing words. Unless the municipality is specifically authorized to do otherwise. There are something like 36 separate instances in the Municipal Act where it says the council can just pass a resolution, or just give approval, or do something different. And of course, you can give direction to staff in a closed meeting, staff or officers or agents of the municipality, to do something. That's as otherwise specifically authorized to do. Yes, Councillor Gough. Yeah.
Sorry, do you have an example of one of these?
Yeah. For instance, if you would like to upload your responsibilities to the county, or, or the county wants to download to you, all that council needs to do in that case to show is to pass a resolution. So section 188 or 189, I can't remember which one of the two, but there's all these other instances. Now, to make matters a little more complicated, we also pointed out to the court that the courts over the last 120 years have also authorized other things to be permitted by not just doing it through a bylaw. Now, I'm sure you must have a confirmatory bylaw, Amber? Do you have a confirmatory bylaw at the end of your meeting? So, sorry, Jen. That technically enshrines everything that you do at a meeting, because most of your business at a council meeting is passing resolutions. Motion, you know, first and seconded, and then, you know, have a vote, and it's, there's a resolution. By having a confirmatory bylaw at the end of the meeting, which approves everything that's happened, all decisions, resolutions, actions of the council, you've actually have technical compliance with section five sub three, okay? But there are a number of exceptions there. So just let me go back, though, to the prior one. Look at, I used to stop the quotation after the first paragraph, and then I thought, I'm actually missing a really important part. Look at the second paragraph. "The council is the general agent of the corporation for all purposes, and is the means whereby the municipality may bind itself to a course of action." That essentially says that the indoor management rule that typically applies to corporations does not apply to a municipal corporation. So you're going to probably ask, what is the indoor management rule? It's a business corporation rule. It's been enshrined in the Canadian Business Corporations Act, as well as the Ontario Business Corporations Act, and it says essentially this. Now, I'm distilling it for you. It essentially says that if you're a director or senior officer of a business corporation, so, Mr. Mayor, you are the chief executive officer, members of council, you're essentially the board of directors of the council. Robin Dunn, he is the CAO, he is a senior officer of the municipality. If you're in a business corporation, if you say something, or if you put something in writing, you may be able to bind the business corporation. That equivocally does not apply to municipal corporations. The Supreme Court of Canada has said that. The indoor management rule does not apply. You always have to have a council resolution, the will of council demonstrated through either a resolution or a bylaw, or something else that's permitted at law, like I said, under the Municipal Act. Otherwise, council and the municipal corporation can't be bound. And the law actually goes a little further. It says, anyone who's dealing with a municipal corporation must ensure that they satisfy themselves that the council has properly authorized its actions. So we get this a number of times a year where they call me, my corporate folks, saying, we're doing a transaction, we're dealing it with the municipality. First of all, where are the letters patented and the articles of incorporation? I go, there are none. They're going, but it's a corporation. I go, it's a special corporation created by statute. Okay, well, where is their statute? There is no statute. It's a bylaw, and you have to find the bylaw. Ultimately, if the bylaw is not there, or a resolution, then council can't act. So you may go, Councillor Fisher, you may go, and you may say to your residents, I guarantee you, I'm going to do this. You have no authority to do that. You can't bind the council. Councillor Snatch, you can't do that. You can't sign on your letterhead and say, I'll get this done for you. It's not worth the paper it's written on. Only council can do that. So that's an important concept for when I get to talk about the role of the individual member of council. So just remember, only council can bind the corporation to actions. There are exceptions, there are some caveats, but that's the general rule. So that essentially comes from section five, five, five-one and five-three. And if you didn't know it, there was a judicial inquiry, you know, for a municipality in your county. By the way, we were the, you may have even seen Mr. Mayor and Mr. Deputy Mayor. My, two of my partners were witnesses at the Collingwood Judicial Inquiry, because at the time that a lot of this was happening, we were legal counsel to Collingwood. And we often said, I'm sorry, who is giving direction on what's happening with the sale of the Power Corp here? You have the CEO of the Power Corp, who is the CAO of the municipality. Who's doing what? And my partner, Leo Long, was very clear. I was advising the municipal corporation. My partner, Ron Clark, was very clear. I was advising Callas Power Corp. Right? They were different entities, and yet everything was all mixed up. So Justice Morocco, on a very expensive judicial inquiry, please don't get involved in one. It's very expensive. The municipality has to pay all costs of all parties, right? Almost all costs of all parties. I can't remember what the cost was. I remember speaking to Sarah Almas, the clerk up there. It was somewhere of upwards of six, eight million dollars. Mr. Mayor, you may know even know better. Eight million. Okay, there you go. It kept increasing. I may have asked Sarah early on. The council as a whole is the directing mind of the municipality, not individual members. Okay, and so on. Council members must not seek to wield that power unilaterally or away from the council chambers. This is so important. You need to understand this, because the residents don't. Your residents don't think so. They think, you're a council member, you can fix my parking ticket. You can tell the chief building official to issue a permit. No, you can't, and I'll have some examples later on, right? You are not to wield the status of your office away from the council chamber, because that's the only way you can make decisions. Mr. Mayor, you're the only exception. You have some unilateral powers. You're not a strong mayor municipality, and I'll speak to that just very briefly. But you do, as the CEO of the municipality, have some unilateral power. You can bind the municipality. Other members of council can't, and so you can't go out in the public and profess that you can do certain things, because you can't. So the head of council here, here, I'm going to go with this. So the head of council, section 225. The role of the head of council is to act as the chief executive officer. You know, and I got into this last term with several council members, very embarrassingly for one member of council, who, one head of council in a municipality, who said, I am the CEO. I know what a CEO is. Don't you know what, you know, Jeff Bezos can do? Or Zuckerberg can do for, you know, oh, I forgot the name. It's not Facebook anymore. It's what? Meta, Meta, that's right. So, and, you know, I got, I got a call, and this doesn't happen very often when I'm legal counsel to a municipality, but I was getting calls from members of council going, our mayor does not understand what a CEO is. I'm like, what do you mean? He is the CEO. No, no, he thinks he's a business corporation CEO. So the mayor doubled down. He felt that he could do what he wanted to do and say what he wanted to say. And he can't. He just can't do that. He can't bind the municipality. So it was a little embarrassing, because I was a little set up, and I think they, but they really set up the mayor, where they had me at a public meeting. They said, oh, Mr. Mascaren, while you're here tonight, can we ask you a question? Sure. Tell us what a CEO of a municipal corporation can do. And I go, oh, yeah, we've had this issue. And so I went through, and I referred to a CEO being quite limited. So let me just tell you, that's what a CEO of a municipal corporation is. It's not the same as a CEO of a business corporation, right? Very limited. That's what Justice Morocco said. "The roles and responsibilities of a head of council differ from those of a corporate executive, chief executive officer in a meaningful way." The head of council does not have the same powers as the CEO of a corporation. More specifically, unlike a corporate CEO, the head of council does not have the power to commit the municipality to anything unilaterally. So it was a little embarrassing, I think, to the head of council of this municipality, because they said, can the head of council do this? Nope. Mr. Mascaren, can the head of council do that? Nope. And they went through a list of 20 things. It was a little embarrassing to the mayor. I think he's gotten the point now. By the way, all of this was captured on live stream. By the way, all of this was captured on live stream um for posterity. Okay, now, we've always had here in Ontario, the weak mayor system, the traditional system of governance in throughout all of Canada, quite honestly. Until this particular government, the the Ford government, has thought it fit to provide strong mayor powers. Um so, weak mayor system. What is the mayor in the weak mayor system? He is a leader among equals. He's only a single voted council. However, no member of council, including the mayor, has inherent executive powers. And the council can only act in concert with the quorum of council to implement the actions and decisions of the municipality. Someone wrote that, I think someone who wrote this book here wrote that. So I like that quote. Now, you do have strong mayor powers and they're not really what I think the public thinks they are. It's not the mayor has complete unilateral authority to do things. Yes, the province has given through the Strong Mayors Building Homes Act and then and then even making it worse by the Better Municipal Governance Act uh eroding, in my view, local democracy. I think it's an abysmal piece of legislation. Uh you know, Premier Ford has been uh pontificating about strong mayors for years. He didn't like the fact that his little brother was being picked on by some members of council at the city of Toronto years ago and felt that they should never have been stripped of his non-statutory powers, which of course council was completely justified in doing in the end of two thousand thirteen when they found him smoking crack cocaine, right? He became a laughing stock to a lot of people. Um made a big hit on Jimmy Kimmel, but I I tell you, I was embarrassed to say I was a municipal lawyer in Toronto because I would go places. I would go down in the States and they go, what's up with your mayor? Um and uh you know, I think that's where this idea took place. I read a biography of Rob Ford and you know, um uh Doug Ford was talking about strong mayor powers. Chicago has them, San Francisco, New York. Those are different strong mayor powers, different type of municipal organizations in the United States. So very quickly, what are the powers that strong mayors have? Well, they can hire and fire the C A C A O. This is terrible because you're eroding the political neutrality and objective views that staff are supposed to give to you. Uh the mayor, uh the C A O essentially becomes a chief of staff beholden only to one person. Can give directions to staff with respect to the powers under five uh six, six point one of the municipal act, can develop the corporate organizational structure, must bring forward the municipal budget and has certain veto powers. Interestingly enough, for bylaws that potentially interfere with provincial priorities. So really, the strong mayor is only there to advance provincial priorities. Well, what happens when this this government may become a different government one day? What's gonna happen with this? Gonna be different provincial priorities? Probably if it's a different party in power. I think it's just abysmal legislation. So now let me talk about individually your roles as members of council. Unlike other actors in the municipal sphere whose authorities, responsibilities are articulated in the municipal act. You won't see anything that actually says, what is the role of a municipal councillor? Doesn't say it. Here's a brief quote and I will round back up and show you this quote, but expand it at the end of today's session. Role of a councillor. As a councillor, you have three main roles. You're a representative. I talked a little bit about that in the bias test. You're a policymaker. As a member of of council, you put in policies, programs, and you're a steward. Now that's not the word I would have used. I probably would have used trustee. But someone who's a steward is, in fact, acts as a trustee, looks after someone else or someone else's property as if it was themselves or their own. That's a really high standard. That's the standard that you're put under. And it says these roles often overlap. George Rustai, um a very well-known municipal lawyer, said, members of council have no authority as individuals to take actions on behalf of municipal corporations. Except when you're sitting at the council table, you have a majority, you have quorum, and the rest of council votes with you. That's our democratic municipal local government system. Okay? You have fiduciary obligations, right? Um Simpson-Fortezzi, a case that dealt with the the mayor becoming the C A O. This is up in, uh I think, Sault Ste. Marie. An elected official stands in a fiduciary relationship to the electorate. So what's a fiduciary obligation? It's a legal duty to act in the best interests of someone else. And it encompasses these things. A duty of care, so you have to look out for others. Duty of loyalty. You can't try to derogate, belittle, denigrate the decisions of the assembly. You have to act in good faith at all times. Good faith, acting in the best interest of everyone, not just special interest groups. And a duty of confidentiality. You cannot go and tell people what council has as confidential information. That's a really key point. There's a really great decision from the Ontario Divisional Court called Follis and um and Aurelia, just just beyond you, where Jay Follis did something really stupid. Right? And I can speak about it if you'd like. I I've I've written on the on the on the decision. My partner Megan Count and I wrote a an interesting paper. It basically came down to this. Confidential information that council has belongs to council. It doesn't belong to any individual member. That's the problem that Jay Follis had. He thought he knew better. And we end up our our paper discussing this. It's, we say, well, a council closed meeting is like Las Vegas. What is said in the council meeting stays in council meeting. There may be some really interested people who want to know. What did council talk about? What did they see? And what did they resolve? Your residents. Some of your residents may really know this. Here's one example. This just happened a few weeks ago. Council member came to me, we're integrity commissioner for this municipality, which shall remain nameless, came to me and he said, John, our municipality is planning to have a addiction center somewhere in the municipality and it looks like it may be going in our ward. This is imperative for my residents who elected me to know about this. And I said, was this discussed in camera? And he said, yes. I said, well, you can't disclose this. He goes, but it's imperative. They need to know. And I said, hold, hold on, why do they need to know? I go, they elected me to this office. And I'm responsible to them. I said, oh, whoa, stop it right there. I said, you're responsible to every resident in the city. Not just to the residents of your ward or your district in this particular case and not to any particular special interest groups. Of course, it's important to them. But there could be all sorts of liability and risk if you go and disclose this. Now, interestingly enough, took my advice and said, okay, I understand, I won't disclose it. Don't I get an email from another member of council who said, I think this member has breached confidentiality. Here's an email where he discloses exactly what happened in camera. Well, that's really terrible. You can't do that. You cannot do that. The Follis and Aurelia case from the divisional court basically says council has that information. It's not any one member's information and you certainly can't disclose it. By the way, if you act in that way and there's liability to the municipality, you won't be immunized by section four forty-eight of the municipal act. That basically says if someone tries to sue you personally for damages, the municipality uh will stand behind you. You probably have insurance for this. But the section four forty-eight says no one can bring that unless you have enacted in good faith. My view is to go and disclose confidential information where council hasn't authorized that disclosure and council can. Council can say, we're gonna report out everything. We're gonna disclose the um in-camera uh legal opinion that we got. This just happened to me, by the way, in Sarnia. We wrote uh, we wrote a very lengthy opinion on why council could not displace homeless people in a park. They just couldn't do it. Council didn't like the opinion because they wanted to displace the homeless folks in this park, the occupants. And so they said, we're gonna disclose this this opinion. They did. They disclosed it all. I got a lot of emails from other municipalities going. We'd like to retain you because is it the same in our municipality? I, my first thought was, oh my god, there goes my proprietary information to the world. But council can decide to do that, but it's council's decision. It's not any individual member's decision, okay? By the way, yes, councillor Fisher.
Uh thank you. No, I just, um going back to uh the the Fallis case, um concerns, because sometimes we do have to go into closed session session and sometimes I know it's come up with me where I would have to perhaps disclose to to remove myself from that meeting at that time, but to reach out to the integrity commissioner. Because we've hired him as our own, like, is he considered kind of like? If I need to ask him a question about something specific in a closed meeting to know whether or not I need to disclose, but I can't discuss it, how can I ask a question?
Uh exactly, uh very good point. In fact, uh like for every rule, there's there's a caveat. And that's a good one. And I I've had this question as an integrity commissioner. Many times council members are really afraid to come to me. They go, I don't think I can disclose this. And I go, well, first of all, I'm under a statutory duty of confidentiality under section two twenty-three point five. It says, anything that the integrity commissioner, uh any knowledge that the integrity commissioner becomes aware of in the course of their obligations and anyone acting under the instructions of the integrity commissioner, which may be the clerk, for instance, who's working with the integrity commissioner to get the integrity commissioner information, is under a duty of confidentiality. And by the way, there's another section underneath that says that duty of confidentiality supersedes M F I P A and a number of council members who have been under investigation have attempted to do that. Well, I wanna see everything that the integrity commissioner has sent to other members of council, to the clerk and to other people. They can't get to that. So the duty of confidentiality is there. In order for the integrity commissioner to advise you, councillor Fisher, you're gonna have to disclose something, but the integrity commissioner is under a duty of confidentiality, not to disclose that information. So I've often said, I understand where you're coming from, but I can't give you advice unless you disclose what it is. And I'm under a duty of confidentiality, so I can't disclose it. The Follis case was interesting because Jay Follis attempted to say, but I told it to a lawyer who is under solicitor-client privilege and he can't go and disclose it. The court found it really interesting. He says, well, first of all, there is a problem. There's an inherent fallacy in your argument. The lawyer that you hired, admittedly a municipal lawyer who actually knows something about this area, so at least you didn't go to your brother-in-law who's a family or tax lawyer, but you went to some, however, that lawyer is a partner in that firm. A lawyer who has knowledge of certain things, his knowledge or her knowledge is imputed to the rest of the firm. Did you know that? That's actual concept at law. So if I'm doing something, my knowledge is imputed to my partners unless we have firewall the file and done all of those things. What they found in this case is that the law firm was actually acting against the city of Aurelia on a number of files. And so the knowledge that the lawyer for Jay Follis had was imputed and that that knowledge of their partners was im- imputed to to his lawyer. And they said, this doesn't work in this context. What it means is you are not allowed to tell anyone. Now, I've given you one, one caveat. I think the municipal auditor would be another person um uh that would have the same duty of confidentiality and a close, closed meeting investigator. All have duties of confidentiality. But that's a really good question. A question that was asked of me is, I was defamed at an in-camera meeting. And I'd like to, can I disclose that to another lawyer? Because I don't know. I think I was defamed and everyone else at the council, the in-camera meeting and along with the few staff members who were at the closed meeting. Now, that's a, that's a matter and and it was discussed in the the Follis case by the divisional court saying if a council member feels that their personal liability is at stake, they may be able to disclose that. And I would always say, go to your integrity commissioner and and ask. In that particular case, I said, you may be able to do this. You have to disclose to me what you want to disclose because as you know, defamation isn't just the one sentence. It's the context around the statement that's made. So I had to look at it and ultimately the council member said, you know what? Now, relooking at it in a little bit of hindsight, I actually don't think it was defamatory. And I I kinda went, whoo, because I didn't really necessarily want to get into that. But you can ask your integrity commissioner. Um by the way, you're not employees. Um this is well-known. Many council members and uh I've had this come up many times at council uh at various municipalities. You know, we're just getting killed by the public here, right? They're just going nuts on us. They're disparaging us. You need to do something, C A O. And I've often said, C A O, be really careful. You cannot venture in there. They're not an employee and there's cases that prove that. Now, the one that uh the Saint Elizabeth case is the constating uh seminal case. But this was uh also repeated last year. You may have heard about this case. Karen Raz, a Mississauga council member who felt that she had to resign because Ron Star, a fellow council member, went and keyed her car. By the way, full disclosure, we acted on behalf of the integrity commissioner because Ron Star wanted to challenge what was happening there. We acted on behalf of the integrity commissioner in a judicial review. We saw the videotapes. We know what happened. Councillor Raz went to court. Did not have the right lawyer. Lawyer went and argued, I'm an employee. She's, I'm sorry, she's an employee. You have an obligation to maintain a workplace harassment-free environment and you didn't do that. The court said, the plaintiff was a city councillor. As an elected city councillor, she has her unique role. It is a principle of municipal law that city councillors are not employees of the municipal corporation. Freedom of expression. We get this a lot. I was involved in this case in the town of Aurora years ago. Councillor Buck was the former mayor. Evelyn Buck then was no longer the mayor, but did not like the mayor and did not like the majority of what council was doing. She felt, oh, you know, they're always denigrating me. They're always disrespecting me. And I was elected to tell the residents who elected me the truth. And she felt that she could go in front of council and say anything that she wanted unfettered, unrestricted. Uh by the way, this was a defamation case. Uh I was surprised that it wasn't named because I was legal counsel to the city of, the town of Aurora. And I said to them, what you, you have reasonable and probable grounds as a council to bring a code of conduct complaint. And she felt that that was defaming her. It's a silly notion, but they went to court. And uh Justice uh, I think it was Justice McDonald at the Superior Court said this, the right to freedom of speech in our society is not an absolute right. What's he referring there? Section one of the Charter. Right? You have reasonable limits in a free and democratic society. While freedom of speech is a cherished right in a free and democratic society, there are reasonable limitations. The town of Aurora, like many towns and cities in the province of Ontario, has a code of conduct that purports to codify parameters of reasonable conduct of elected town officials. The plaintiff clearly has a perception that she has an unfettered right to freedom of expression and freedom of speech. That freedom, however, is circumscribed by the Charter. And this is made uh known in a number of decisions. Uh we were involved in one. There was a member of council. I will out him. Uh councillor Jim Hanley from um the city of Thorold, we investigated. He was uh uh sorry. Councillor Harold Johnker from uh the town of town of West Lincoln, township of West Lincoln, led the Niagara Truckers contingent in the convoy in Ottawa. We investigated. We looked at it. We said, hey, he has a right to freedom of assembly. He has a right to freedom of speech. And he could have said anything that he wanted and he could have attended in Ottawa up until the point that it became an illegal protest. Before that, it was a peaceful assembly. As soon as the province went in and said, this is no longer a peaceful assembly, the federal government said it is a protest, it is an occupation and you cannot be there, became illegal. So we did that. It went to court. The court said very clearly, the code put reasonable limits. They were justifiable limits. And what the integrity commissioner did is looked at this and balanced the Charter right. We said he has a right to freedom of expression when it was an a lawful peaceful assembly. Soon as it became unlawful, and the only way you can determine that is the legislators at the time, city of Ottawa, the province of Ontario and the federal government all said, you have to get out of there. It became an occupation and illegal. So council members, please remember, you have the right to freedom of expression within the reasonable limits. So, council members, please remember, you have the right to freedom of expression within the reasonable limits. And the code can circumscribe that. That's what Buck and Morris say. Now, I'm gonna pivot. I've talked about council, the head of council, individual members of council. Let's go to the municipal administration. Like the other players, section two twenty seven of the municipal act sets out what the municipal administration, the officers and employees are entitled and responsible to do. What does the administration do? They implement council's decisions. They carry out council's decisions, clause A. They undertake research and provide wise, neutral, not politicized advice to members of council. And they carry out such duties as you give to them, okay? Municipal staff are imperative to the functioning of the town. That's what Justice Morocco said. It is staff's role to provide counsel with objective information and recommendations. Objective. This is what really bothers me with respect to strong mayor powers because the C A O has become now a political body. And you see this, you see the struggles. You, you've heard them. I don't have to mention the municipalities. We've been involved. I've been giving very specific confidential advice to four strong mayor municipalities. And I tell you, the struggles that they're having is really, really tough. Some staff, as you've probably known, strong mayor powers, uh, municipalities, the mayor can dismiss certain senior staff, except stat, some certain statutory officers. Well, what happens when you hire, um, a city solicitor, a town solicitor? They're not a statutory officer. The mayor can hire and fire that person. When it comes time to give objective advice to council, is the city solicitor in a bit of a conflict? My view certainly is. I've spoken to M L D A O, the Municipal Law Departments of Ontario. They finally invited an external lawyer last year, and they put this question to me. Who does the township lawyer, or the city lawyer, the town lawyer, or the regional solicitor, who did they advise when there's strong mayor powers in? I said, that's really telling. I said, they should be advising council. Do they? I've seen it not go that way, and I think it's really dangerous. So, Justice Morocco, in the calling with judicial inquiry, municipal staff is imperative to the functioning of the town. They give objective, neutral, non-politicized advice in council to you. Now, you do have statutory officers. Normally, you are entitled to be involved and to have a say. But certain statutory officers cannot be budged. So the clerk, um, so, uh, you cannot tell the clerk how to run an election, right? She's the chief electoral officer under the Municipal Elections Act. She runs it. Imagine if council starts telling her, no, you're gonna run it this way? It won't work. Or if you tell her, we want you to keep your minutes and records in this particular way. When the municipal act says you are to keep notes, uh, with, sorry, you are to keep the records without note or comment, right? You can't tell her. The treasurer, municipality can't run budgetary deficits, right? You can't tell your treasurer, oh, you know what? We, we're in a deficit position, so you have to do your financial statements. Your treasurer will say, no, no, council, I cannot do that. You're gonna have to raise rates, right? Your integrity commissioner, your chief building official, right? We want you to issue this permit. This is important for municipalities, but no, council, we can't do that because the applicant does not apply, does not comply with all applicable law, right? You can't tell the chief building official. And, and I'm going to speak to your C L. A municipality doesn't have a C L. By the way, earlier slides, those are all mandatory officers that a municipality must have, okay? But the C A O is not a mandatory officer, but as soon as you do have a mandatory, uh, as soon as you do have a C A O, what is the C A O in charge of? Well, he's responsible for, in your case, exercising general control and management of the affairs of the municipality for the purpose of ensuring efficient and effective operation of the municipality. What does that tell you? It says, the C A O runs the municipality. Now, I brought something today, and I, I, I did not put it on a slide because it's too long. Uh, I, I, this is from Municipal World, couple of, uh, elections ago. New council members, eight mistakes you can make as soon as you take office. This is from Fred Dean and Nigel Bellchamber. Fred Dean, a longtime municipal lawyer. Nigel was, uh, uh, treasurer and a senior commissioner in the City of London for many years. I respect them dearly. They're friends of mine. I've worked with them. The first mistake you can make as a member of council, number one, assume that you've been elected to, quote, "run the municipality." The response? You have not. Council's role, not individual councillors nor the mayor, is to set plans and select priorities for the municipality. The duty of the administration with those plans in place is to implement the decisions of council. This may be difficult for a member of council who has some administrative experience. However, the best advice is to resist the urge to attempt to direct staff or de, or develop ground-level programs. Resist the temptation to jump into the breach. It will only draw you away from the more important decision-making role. Stay out of the works garage. I get this all the time. Former member of council in municipalities was the former fire chief. Decides to come up with the fire plan and present it to council. That's not the role of a member of council. Members of council, formerly, um, uh, human resource individuals? No, they're not bringing forward the organizational structure of the municipality. They ask staff to come back with those things, and typically, it's all directed to the C A O. The C A O is the person who runs the municipality. Again, the language there, the C A O exercises general control and management of the affairs of municipality for the purpose of ensuring effective, oh, sorry, efficient and effective operations. The management, the operations, the day-to-day function of municipalities in the hands of the C A O and the staff that report to the C L. It's not council that does that. So you do not run the municipality. What does council do? Council governs the municipality through your governance role. The C A O is your conduit to the rest of staff. He is the one employee that you have. By the way, let me say it, you have a very good interim one right now. Uh, if you want to read anything more about it, the role and significance of the C A O position Canadian Municipal Corporations, Kama wrote this really great paper that I would recommend to anyone who wants to understand what the role of a C A O is. I work with C A Os on a daily basis, with clerks and treasurers and the chief planners, chief building officials. They're there to provide you with neutral, impartial, non-politicized advice. And I have, uh, a couple of slides that speak to this. Members of council must respect the need for a neutral and impartial public service, which gives its best advice based not on the political winds that may be blowing that week, or that month, or that term, but on the merits of the question that's before council, right? That's why you have municipal staff. So how do they work together? Back to Mr. Rogers, uh, in a different text, while it is council's roles to make decisions on politi, on policy and to make the rules to govern the municipality on matters within its jurisdiction, it is staff who carry out those policies. How? Through the administration, through the day-to-day operations and management of the municipality. I just recently pulled this. Now, I didn't agree very much with our former Ontario ombudsman, Andre Moran. In fact, we went toe-to-toe in the city of London in what he called the most complex, time-consuming, expensive, closed-meeting investigation that his office had ever done. Our view, my, my partner Chris Williams and I, you were wrong. You were wrong at the very basis. But I do agree with him on this one particular quote here. "The political power held by councils and committees is, in the main, a policymaking power. Mayors and municipal councils represent the public by holding delegated authority to pass bylaws and determine broad questions of policy, including the allocation of municipal programs and services. They also establish and oversee administrative policies, practices, and programs that are required to implement the decisions of council." How do you do that? By enacting those programs, those policies, and approving municipal budgets. That's how you do it. By contrast, councillors are not given the power to do the hands-on administration of the municipality. It is the officers and employees of the municipality who implement or administer councils' policies and program choices and carry out the duties assigned by a municipality. I really like that quote. I had not noticed it. It's from two thousand and eight, so seventeen years, sixteen years behind schedule. I finally found it, and I'm now quoting it because I think it distills down really well, what, uh, I'm trying to say in this presentation. Um, here's an academic source, uh, Michael Ashton, Joe Cussner, and David Siegel. Joe Cussner is a council member in St. Catherine's. Um, they're, they're all profs or were professors at Brock University. They say, "The prescriptive literature offers clearer, if not always attainable, advice. Politicians must take a clear leadership role in policy setting and stay out of administration and management." I had a bit of a set-to with a, with a head of council who says, hey, now, Karen, you're from a big city, you're from Toronto, like, what do you know? We get elected by the people here. They want us to fix the potholes. They want us to make sure that the traffic lights are working. I go, no, no, that's wrong. And if you are perpetuating that, you're wrong as members of council to do that. You're not there to go fix the potholes. That's wrong. Imagine being Steve Jobs, the visionary behind Apple. You, as a consumer, you bought an iPhone. It's not working. Do you expect to be able to call Apple at its offices in California, or wherever they are? I think they're in California. And get Steve Jobs to walk you through how to fix your cellphone? No! He's the person, the visionary behind that directs how the company is going to go. How these things are gonna be put, but he's not the person who's answering your phone to, to, to help you. That's not your roles, members of council. Now, can you call the, you know, public works department to say, hey? You, there, of course, of course. Can you do this? There is a pothole in front of my neighbor's, you know, driveway. You need to go there right now. No, you're directing staff. That's wrong. Why? Why is that wrong? How can that be wrong? You're trying to get something righted. What happens if the public works person is dealing with something that's really an emergent health, safety, public s- safety issue? You're taking them away from something to go and fix your neighbor's pothole? That's wrong. You cannot do that. Villeneuve in North Stormont, okay. Really interesting case. I had some involvement, full disclosure, not in this particular case, but with Counselor Villeneuve. Counselor Villeneuve, council member felt that she had an unfettered right to say what she wanted, when she wanted, and how she wanted to say it, okay? What she did is she was having a long fight with the C A O, did not like the C A O, who I thought actually was a pretty good guy. I don't act as legal counsel to this municipality. I was called in only on special, a couple of special matters that I handle. Thought he was a very good C A O. She didn't ha, like him very much and sent him what the Integrity Commissioner termed a series of intemperately worded emails. He did not disclose to council that someone had resigned their, um, their, uh, office as a somewhat senior manager at the municipality. He felt that the person wasn't that senior that he needed to disclose to that council. She called him out. Why are you lying to us? Why are you hiding the truth? She, she basically said, you're a liar in an open public meeting. The C A O filed a code of conduct complaint. The Integrity Commissioner, by the way, Tony Fleming, your Integrity Commissioner, looked at it and said, well, this had been leading up. She, she really doesn't like him, but this is something that she cannot do. She cannot call out and publicly criticize a member of staff. And, I'm sorry, you've been warned before. You've been told that you can't do this. This is it. I'm in, I'm recommending a significant penalty. I can't remember if it was sixty or ninety days. As you know, the maximum penalty is ninety days, uh, but it was imposed by council. Counselor Villeneuve did not like this. She decided, I'm going to court. Now, she made the same mistake that Jay Fallis did when he went to court, thinking that this might be an appeal. There is no appeal from a code of conduct. You go on a judicial review, and the judicial review only looks at, was there a reasonable decision made? Anyway, the court came back and basically said, actually, the council reached a very reasonable, logical conclusion, and so did the Integrity Commissioner. By the way, there is a council-staff relationship policy that says you cannot criticize staff publicly. There is something in the code of conduct that says the exact same thing. You have to have respect for staff. Because why? Staff give you neutral and partial advice. They may not always give you the advice that you want. They may be giving you advice that you don't want to hear. Should they be criticized for that? No, they should be given kudos on the back for doing that, for standing up to give you the advice that maybe you don't want to hear. You, as legislators, though, have a decision to make. You don't have to accede to what staff's telling you. If you want to make a different decision, you can do that. As a majority, you can vote to do that. But you don't criticize staff for giving you the advice that they're giving you. So the court came back. Justice Janet Leaper wrote the majority decision. Uh, I really admire Janet Leaper. She's one of my favorite people in the whole world. We used to travel around the province together when she was a administrative lawyer. We used to go and train councils on codes of conduct. Uh, she was the right person to write this decision. She said, "The relative power imbalance between staff who do not have a voice at council and elected members who do, and always have the last say, right, mean that their respective roles and responsibilities must be acknowledged and respected." So, Counselor Villeneuve, you were in the wrong, and council was in the right to penalize you and to impose, um, uh, remedial measures on you. Why? Well, you have also the council-staff relation policy, a mandatory policy under section two seventy of the municipal. Every municipality has it. You have one, and it basically says the roles of council as the governing arm of the municipality have to be respected by staff. Staff can't go and then start speaking to the media or on social media and ridiculing your decisions. That would be completely wrong. Staff can't do that. But you, as members of council, can't be on, you know, the council chamber here where you're, you know, here, and you have the last word, and start publicly criticizing staff that can't defend themselves or start saying things publicly on social media to regular media channels that criticize staff. You can't do that. Inappropriate. It's also covered, of course, in the code of conduct because, look, the province has reserved onto itself, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the ability to prescribe certain subject matters that must be in a code of conduct. There are four of them. Number two says respectful conduct, and it could have ended right there, right? You could have had a period right there, but look at what it says. "Including conduct towards officers and employees of the municipality." Why? Because the office knew that there was issues here, right? They're, they've been grappling with it. In fact, really bad, bad choices by the former Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, right? To kill the proposed changes that were gonna be made to codes of conduct back in November of two thousand and twenty-one, right? Now, then Minister Colander now is kind of like floundering around. I don't know what to do. It's complicated. Damn right, it's complicated. They've had three years to deal with it, and now the, uh, Provincial Integrity Commissioner is looking at it and weighing in and, uh, hopefully, giving some very sound advice. I really very much respect David Wake, the Provincial Integrity Commissioner, and I hope they see some light to doing something about the horrendous, um, uh, situation that's happening with, um, between codes of conduct and some really abysmal behavior. The poster child, of course, is Rick Shirelli out in Ottawa that, you know, was, uh, just doing some, like, completely disgusting things to applicants for jobs, um, uh, as his admin assistant and his existing admin assistants. By the way, all young women who, uh, were very much younger than, uh, this is, I, I'm sorry, the longest-standing, uh, at that point, uh, councillor in the city of Ottawa, just abysmal conduct there. Uh, the Shirelli in Ottawa case is, um, really interesting reading. So, Mr. Mayor and members of council, I've come to sort of like the end of like the first tranche of what I was doing. So I've talked to you a little bit about role of council, role of the head of council, the individual members of council. I've, I've tried to explain a little bit there about how it works and how you are to interact and work with staff. You, as individual members of council, no ministerial or executive authority. Your power is at the council table to work with other members of council. Early on in my career, I was a little bit of a, of a know-it-all. I, I really was. I was a little bit of a, I won't say it, but and I realized that wasn't going over. and I realized that wasn't going over so well. I felt like maybe I knew better than some people. Okay. Maybe I did. But you have to work with people. So I've actually learnt now. There are times to be tough. There are times to be aggressive. There are times to be contentious and confrontational. However, things might work a lot more better if people worked collegially together and tried to respect their roles and not not try to override things. And, you know, I find that many times when I'm dealing with difficult individuals, sometimes to try to see their point of view really, really helps. Then you know potentially where they're coming from and you have greater knowledge, but also then you can work with them. Right? I mean, if you watched the debate last night, you saw two very different ways of trying to approach things. And I think one candidate was trying to say, I will work with people. And I think the other candidate was saying, I don't want to work with people because I know better than everybody else, right? Very different ways. My view and I've learned through many years is maybe, maybe what you try to do is you try to work with people. So I often work with councils when there's dissension. And I often get asked by members of council, maybe on the short end of the stick. Well, what am I going to do? I'm always on the short end of the stick. Say, why don't you try to work with people? Why don't you actually try to work with them instead of always trying to, you know, punch them in the face? You might be able to get a little bit more. They might see you as an actual human being instead of some, you know, ideological, you know, think tank that is going off, you know, on 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 a certain course that we cannot work with, right? So that's, I want to now talk to you. So that's that's the end of the first part. What happens when you have multiple roles as members of council? But also you might be members of committee, members of boards, okay? Here's how it may arise. You may be a member of council in a dual role because a statute says you are. So by virtue of your office uh, here at the township of Ramara, Mayor Clark and Deputy Mayor Bell are ex-official members of Simcoe County Council. Uh, you're actually the warden uh, mayor uh, at the at the county. You were elected for a two-year term, which is what the the county system works like. So that's one way that you can have dual roles. You can also have a different role when council itself appoints you to be a representative on another body, right? Another entity. Uh, committee of adjustment, conservation authority, property standards committee, licensing committee, and so on. Or or you may be appointed to be a director of a municipal corporation, right? Whether it's a municipal service corporation, a housing corporation, or a local electricity distribution company. You can also have a different role if you yourself personally are a member of another body. You are a member of a local service club. You are a member of a charitable foundation or a nonprofit organization, but not appointed by council. In that case, and I will show you in just a moment, but you have to be very, very mindful and very careful about indirect pecuniary interest. Okay? You don't have to if council appoints you, and I'll speak that in just a moment. So remember before I said you as a member of council have a duty to exercise your judgment, your discretion, your decisions in the best interest of the municipality? Well, who do you owe the obligation to when you have dual hats or multiple hats? The general rule is your primary obligation is to act in the best interest of the particular body that you are actually sitting on at the time that you're asked to make a decision or act. You cannot legal term, better your discretion by being a member of another body and going to that body and saying, I can only do this because that's what my council wants me to do. That's wrong. You have to exercise independent authority when you sit on this other body. Right? So here, I'm going to give you a couple of examples. In the two-tier structure, this matter was considered in the Orangeville and Dufferin case. Right? Um, Dufferin County wanted to sell a railway right of way. That was primarily in Orangeville. Sorry, the other way around. Orangeville wanted to sell. It was primarily in Orangeville, but they wanted to sell it. They have waited voting in Dufferin County. I only know this because we're general counsel to the county of Dufferin. County of Dufferin um, attempted to make an argument that the town of Orangeville representatives had an indirect pecuniary interest because they were members of a body. Town of Orangeville that sat on the upper tier body, the county of Dufferin, and therefore they were recused. They couldn't make a vote. And the court said, actually, they are members. But you have to recognize the two-tier structure in the municipal act. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't work the way you're arguing. Everyone always would have to recuse themselves every time. And so you wouldn't be able to do this. The upper tier members of council, of course, they're lower tier members of council, but they have to think about their upper tier representative role when they're at the upper tier. So I went to Witcher Stoville Council. I was about to give an example of this and the mayor there said to me, can I give the example? And I said, sure. Go ahead, Miss Mayor Lovett. And he said, so he said, I'm the, I'm the mayor of the town of Witcher Stoville. We have one bus line of York Region Transit that runs through and it goes all the way over to Young Street. Very, very important for the town of Witcher Stoville to have this bus line that runs through. Because our residents can get all the way to Young Street and then go up and down that corridor. Says, but I also said as a member of York Regional Council. And when we were talking about service levels at York Region Transit, our bus route had one of the lowest service levels of all of the bus routes. He said, so when it came time to vote, he said, I had to put aside Witcher Stoville and I had to put on my my regional hat. And he said, I had to vote against keeping that bus route. And I go, and I bet you that got a lot of pats on the back and kudos when you came back to council and he goes, it did not. And just so you have to make those hard decisions, right? So that's the two-tier structure. So this is the best case that talks about this when you've been appointed to be a member of another body of a of a local board. But this decision has gone beyond just local boards. It talks about committees, other other entities. So we're talking about T H C is the Toronto Harbour Commission, okay? The applicants believe that they are acting in the best interests of the Toronto Harbour Commission. The applicants were the three city of Toronto appointees to the Toronto Harbour Commissioner. It would appear that Mayor June Rollins believes that the city-appointed commissioners should act in a way that represents the interests of the city. If she believes that the three city-appointed commissioners are agents of the city, she is in error. The Toronto Harbour Commissioners uh, commission commissioners responsibility is not only to the city, but to everybody, including the federal government. That's part of the Toronto Harbour Commission. The members thereof must act in the best interest of the commission, regardless of who appointed them, even if that interest is contrary to the wishes of those who appointed them. So council may appoint one of you to be maybe more than one, to be on the conservation authority. Is someone appointed to the conservation authority? Yes, councillor, councillor Goff. So you've been appointed. So your council here at at your municipality at Ramara says, we don't want any rates to be increased. We don't want to pay anything more. But you're a member of the conservation authority and at the conservation authority, they said, we have a new mandate. We need more planners, more engineers. We have to raise the rates. We have to get more more money. So what do you do when you're at the conservation authority? When you're at the conservation authority and you're a member of that authority, you have to think of the best interest of the conservation authority. You know that council may want you to do something else. But you have to think about, you cannot just say, oh, my council said that and that's what I'm doing. Now, admittedly, that often happens and that's wrong. But council's appointed you. Now, council here, if you don't make the decision that they like, council can always say, we're revoking your appointment and you have that authority. By the way, that authority is not in the Conservation Act, Conservation Authorities Act. It's not in the municipal act. It's in the legislation act. Many people get confused about this. At least three times a year I get, can I have an opinion? Can they actually remove a member from an appointed committee? Yes, you can. It's the legislation act that actually says that you can do so. So, okay? Now, what happens if you're appointed to a business corporation?
Yes, just to clarify, so if I'm sitting on a committee and so I have my committee hat on and I'm thinking about the committee and I make a decision there. Now I have to go back to council and ratify the decision at council that was made in that committee. Can I, I now have to change my hat and wear my council? And if I disagree with it, I, from that view, I can now vote it down.
That's right, Deputy Mayor. You can actually vote differently. And I tell you, people do not understand that. Your residents may be looking, they're going, wow, he's flip-flopping. And I mean, it's tough. That's your responsibility, right? You, that's your role. Council trusted you to go. Now, again, council says you're not making the decision. This is happening a lot with public library boards. This is what I'm seeing this term. Don't, not sure why, but it's happening all over Ontario with public library boards. Uh, and people are getting removed. And I keep saying, you have the authority to do that. Yes.
Well, I think one of the difference, especially when you talk about county. Uh, when when we're sent to, he gets a wage from Simcoe County when he's there. We're now paid to work for Simcoe County, not Ramara Township. And I believe Conservation Authority is the same. I think they pay a per deal to the folks when we send them there. That's who's paying them. They work for the Conservation Authority while there. But I like your comment, but you can come back here and vote the exact opposite and vote against the budget when it comes back to your own council. So, because when you're here, you're paid to be here.
That's right. And different, you've got to toggle the hat. That's really hard for people to understand. Right? But that's what the case law very unequivocally says. So yes, you may have to make different decisions and it may look completely disjunctive to someone who doesn't understand. But you understand. And so Deputy Mayor, yes, you may make a decision at at county council, but make a different one here. When it comes to ratify, you're going, no, I don't agree with that. And someone may say to you, but you voted the other way. It's hard to explain, right? It is, it's hard. Yes, councillor Fisher?
Thank you. Um, I know that CEO Dunn will be talking. Um, I think at our next council meeting about our different committees and boards and we pardon? The one after that? Okay, sorry. Um, but going back to the types of committees and boards that we have, and I'm sure lots of municipalities have. We do have ones like the Conservation Authority or Chamber like outside the reach of. But then we also have our council committees, like our community center boards and things like that. Would it be best practice then, because we do have liaisons from council sitting on these different committees and boards? To to have it in the terms of reference than to not be a voting member while you're sitting in these committees and boards? Because you're acting as a liaison. Because if I am to be at any community center board and be there acting as any community center board member, which again, I'm there from council to be there by council because it's a, it's a committee of council, right? Is that, would that be in better practice? Just because we are going to be working on, um, I'm, I'm guessing a lot of our committees and boards and looking at our terms of references and doing different things. Talking about different procedure bylaws coming up. So just as maybe your opinion, maybe I'm going way off in the field here with this, but would it be in better practice just to take into consideration in your opinion?
Well, I'll answer it this way. That's a policy decision that has to be made by municipality based on its particular circumstances. My view is, I don't see that quite often. I I actually see members just being voting members. I don't see them stripped of their ability to vote just because they're the liaison. You're appointing them, they're voting members. They may be outvoted. It may not be a committee fif- more than fifty percent. It may be two members of council and seven members of the public, right? But I don't typically see as not having the right to vote. But again, that's a really individual policy decision that has to be made. I'm not, I'll, my off-the-top frank view is, I think if you appoint someone, you should trust them to have the voting right. Yeah. So um, the same rule applies with respect to corporations. So you appoint someone to a municipal service corporation, electricity power corp, a nonprofit uh, corporation. Uh, you, the obligation is every director officer of a corporation must act honestly and in good faith with the view to the best interest of the corporation. What that, what is that? Those are fiduciary obligations. So it's the same rule that applies over and over again. Now, if you're a member of another body in your lay capacity, in your personal life, in your private capacity, right? Uh, councillor Goff, you, you're you're a member of the service club, of a service club in the municipality. That's okay. No one says that you can't do that. That's okay. In fact, there's a principle. It's the fourth principle under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act in one point one, which says there is a benefit to a municipality when members have a broad range of skills, knowledge and interests and and connections. But you just have to know what to do with it. So if you haven't been appointed by council, then if that body comes before council, asking for something that has a financial nature to it. So for instance, a service club is coming to council saying, could we have a grant this year? You have to then step away and you have to declare an indirect pecuniary interest under section two and you have to recuse yourself. You don't have to do that if council has appointed you. Do you know why? Because, I'll tell you, this is Socratic method. Because there is a provision in the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act that says the sections five points, a section five, five point two and five point three do not apply if a member has a pecuniary interest arising only because council has appointed them to the body. So for instance, councillor Goff, if you're on the uh, Conservation Authority, you are allowed to come back to council and still vote on the matter, even though the Conservation Authority may have a real pecuniary interest. You're still allowed to do that because you've been appointed by council. Okay? So that's the difference there. Again, that's really tough for people to understand. The first question I ask when someone sends me, I'm a member of this body. Can I, do I have to declare conflict? And I'll often say, have you been appointed by council? And they go, why does that matter? Well, it does because there's an exception that applies. Mr. Mayor, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, years ago, my wife was a member of the Chamber of Commerce. And they came here looking for money. And I had to declare on it. I actually didn't even think, one of the councillors reminded me, isn't your wife a member of your chamber? I said, yeah, well, bye.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's an interesting little quirk. The language doesn't work very well. I've written a paper on this, but and the courts really struggle with this. Because if you look at the, well, look, look, I have it on the screen here. Indirect pecunaries, for the purposes of this act, a member has an indirect pecuniary interest in any matter in which the council is concerned. If the member is a member of a body. Now, members defined, right? In the act, it means a member of council or a member of a local board. But in sub two there is a member, sub three, sorry, is a member of a body. You don't use the definition there. It's a real quirk. But then if you look at section three of the act, the deemed interest provisions, it says the interests of a member's spouse, parent or child, direct or indirect. Well, this doesn't speak to anyone else's interest except the member. The courts sometimes have applied it one way, saying, of course, that's what it's intended to mean. And sometimes they say they don't fall within that at all because it only speaks to the member. It's a really bad, badly worded section that's been in place for something like forty years. So anyway, just a little quirk there. So, Mr. Mayor, I've come to the end of really the first part. I probably have about another half an hour. Would you like, yeah, continue? Oh, take a break? Sure. Yeah, thank you.
We're live now, are we? We are live and I'll just get my clerk to confirm that I still have my quorum.
Thank you, Your Worship. I can confirm you have quorum.
Okay, uh, John, take it away.
I'm sorry. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council for the break. I'm gonna do part two of my presentation, which will be shorter than, than part one. I'm gonna talk about just certain particular areas, what I call of influence, and maybe areas that you shouldn't be influencing and, uh, issues with, um, uh, members of council and their own responsibilities and so on. So. So on planning applications, uh, remember the indoor management rule? Council's, council members' responsibilities, no unilateral ministerial executive authority. You have to be careful when you make any kind of, um, commitment or any kind of representation to an applicant on a planning application. I was, I was taught when I was a much younger lawyer that when you are, have a planning application at a municipality, you should always go and talk to the ward councillor or, or the head of council, or even more than one person. But you should always make that lobbying effort. Now, lobbying's become like a bad word now, and you have to be really careful. Some municipalities have lobby bylaws, uh, uh, more, you know, urbanized, really uh, populated or, uh, you know, um, municipalities. Um, I, I, they're not, they're not wide ranging throughout the province, but, so just remember, you cannot negotiate, uh, with the applicant or the owner or the developer. To do so would be possibly putting at risk what your staff may need to do, because a whole bunch of things. For, for instance, you have no executive or legislative authority to do so. The conditions or the terms that you're seeking to negotiate may be covered by legislation. So for instance, the one that always gets, uh, councils into trouble is when they negotiate terms of site plan agreements really, really hard. Site plan agreement, usually one of the last development approvals that you need before the building permit. Sometimes a site plan agreement is thought of, oh, we missed it before, let's try to catch it now. But if you look at the authority for site plan conditions under section forty one of the Planning Act, they're limited. There's only like twelve, fourteen of them there. You cannot go beyond that. And sometimes you have a real problem. There, there's cases on point that say council negotiated too strongly and too well. They couldn't do these things. The other side, the municipality will argue, but, but like, this is the deal that the other side voluntarily made. And they got a building permit and they got the benefit. Now they're coming back and they're saying they want two hundred thousand dollars for off-site, um, I don't know, intersection improvements that were down the street, not in front of the premises. They shouldn't be able to get that. And the courts have said, no, sorry, you're a creature provincial statute. You can only do what the law allows you to do. Typically, it's a member of council who wants the extra, you know, and you, you gotta be really careful to do that. You have to be careful about the anti-bonusing rule, right? What's the anti-bonusing rule? Section one oh six of the municipal act. A council cannot provide financial assistance directly or indirectly to any manufacturing or, uh, manufacturing business and commercial enterprise. What's a commercial enterprise? Very broad, not a defined term, anything that's commercial in nature. So be really careful. You cannot do anything there that provides assistance. Ie, selling or leasing property at less than fair market value or giving any kind of a waiver from any levy, fee, rate or charge, right? Council members, you know, sometimes trying to negotiate, say, you know, we won't charge you planning processing fees. You can't do that if it's a commercial enterprise. And then the indoor management rule, which I've already talked about, okay? So you can't make commitments to, to applicants. They may try to bind you to them. Yes.
Well, that's the trouble, especially on, what was the first one, site plan. So many of the public think they can come to a council meeting and just get council to vote down the site plan, and then they can't go ahead. And they don't understand that we're only approving the number of parking spaces for, like, it's, it's very scriptive on what it is. But they see that as, yeah, it's almost political nightmare to get into it, because the public feel that's the opportunity to lobby, to have something defeated.
Yeah, it's their last opportunity. And actually, they used, the public had no right to appeal, right? Uh, before, uh, now it's, it's all changed. Now you have to have an authorized officer, right? To give site plan approval to take away that ability for council, uh, sorry, for members to come in front of council to try to get you something to do that you can't do. Um, so the, the other day I was, um, I was asked by an upper tier municipality, one of the, the mayors of the local tier came and, uh, uh, supported someone who said, you need to waive development charges against me. Uh, you know, and gave a really heartbreaking story. Just no authority in the Development Charges Act to do that. It doesn't say you can waive development charges. It says you can exempt development charges, but only if you do it in the bylaw, not just as a waiver. And as you know, if you want to amend the development charge bylaw to, to accede to the waiver, you have to have a background study and you have to put the bylaw and you can't just do it on the fly. Council did it anyway. So one council member is very upset, asked for legal advice, and I said, you can do one of two things. One, you can bring a challenge, seek to quash it, because there's no authority to do this. Or just please ask council to reconsider, uh, you know, maybe we'll back you up with an, with a legal opinion that says you actually can't do this, right? What council should have done is should have asked staff, if they thought that there was any merit to what the person was saying, direct the matter back to staff, who will give you a neutral, impartial opinion as to how to do it, if you really want to do it. Or if you just can't do it, to tell you that you can't do it. That's would have been the proper way to do it, not just to say, yeah, we'll waive the development charges. I said, it's creating a really bad precedent. What's, what happens when the next person comes in for you with a sob story? So be careful there. Committee of Adjustment, um, you appoint members of Committee of Adjustment. Just remember, you're appointing them. How will it look if you stand in front of your own Committee of Adjustment and say, I'm councillor Snuck and I'm here? And I want you to do this. Those members of the committee you've appointed to the committee, you can't stand in front of them and start saying, I'm a council member. Now, it's your own property, that's different. Uh, that's different. Like, who, I guess you could get someone to speak on your behalf. I'd say that's different. But if it's anyone else's, you can't go there. And if you do go in front of the Committee of Adjustment, you're not a council member. You're mister or misses or miss, right? You're, you're an individual. You're not the council member, because you can't bring that status of council to that, right? Members of Committee of Adjustment is a quasi judicial body. They must be free of any kind of apprehension of bias or any kind of influence. So you can't do that, right? So don't go and have discussions with the Committee of Adjustment. That's inappropriate, right? Ontario Land Tributal, same thing. Council makes decisions on all sorts of land use planning matters. subdivision approvals, consents on on zoning bylaws, temporary use bylaws. That's where council exercises its authority. It'd be really wrong for you to be potentially, let's say, on the side that was saying, no, we shouldn't allow this zoning bylaw to go ahead. And then for you to show up at the at the Ontario Land Tribunal and say, I'm councillor X and I'm here with these people and I'm against what council voted for. First of all, you're denigrating the council's decision. I'm sorry, you had your opportunity to make a decision with council and council voted against you, whether it was to approve or not approve the matter. But you can't show up at the O L T and with your councillor hat on and say, I'm here to do this and go against the will of council. Now, I also think it's wrong for you to go and put, you know, and 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 proffer the council position as well. Council's made its decision. Maybe it's sent its legal counsel or its planner to go and defend or support the decision. Mr. Mayor?
We had a mayor that did that, stood up at the hearing and said his council is being unreasonable and he supports the plaintiff.
You know, that's wrong because, Mr. Mayor, when does that stop? Council makes its decisions. It's a democratic process. It votes whether, you know, it's a four to three vote or it's a six to one vote. Council votes. Decisions made. Okay, there's reconsideration. Perhaps there's a little bit of opportunity to, I I'm sorry, I don't know your procedure bylaw that well, but most procedure bylaws might, if you want to reconsider, might allow it with, you know, maybe the person who voted in the majority has to somehow move it. I don't I'm not sure how your 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 procedure bylaw works. Okay, so there is a little bit, but once it's done, it's done and to keep hammering away is wrong. You council's made its decision. You're just wasting time. You're not having effective meetings, efficient meetings, which is and it's in your hands, right, Mr. Mayor? Because that's one of your responsibilities. So by law enforcement, this is the big one. The right of a member of council to express their views must respect the independence of law enforcement and law enforcement officers, by law enforcement officers, right? So staff, your by law enforcement officers will go and do by law enforcement activities. You can't tell them, you can't weigh in and start saying to them, you need to ticket this person or don't ticket this person. They're good. They're they were doing. They were doing something nice, right? For a good purpose. Don't don't ticket them. You can't do that. That's interfering with the administration of justice. It's completely wrong. By law enforcement officers and police officers have a discretion whether to charge someone, not to charge someone, to issue a ticket, not pursue, you know, not issue a ticket, to go to court. Like you can't say to one, you have to fight this till the end degree. I want you to go to court. I want you to hammer them. You can't do that as council. Once the by law enforcement officer is dealing with it, it's person's dealing with it. You can't, as council members, tell them. They also have independence from political interference. Best example I can give to you is Mayor Groves in Calladen, who wanted to maybe, maybe do the right thing. Neighbor dispute, she decides I'm gonna go out, I'm gonna watch, see what's going on, and then she takes sides. And all of a sudden, then she tells the by law enforcement officers what they should be doing. Complaint filed, the integrity commissioner says you cannot do that. They're independent. You're politically interfering. And it recommended, I guess he found that she wasn't probably doing it for the right reason. So that's dangerous for any of you when you have a neighborhood dispute, you know? You say, you know what, if there's something happening next door, too much noise, I don't know, change of the grading, you know, I'll let the by law enforcement officer know, or maybe you should let the by law enforcement officer know. What happens if the the resident says to you, I don't feel comfortable doing that? Councillor Bell, should you go in and file the complaint on behalf of the resident? No, no, don't do that. I was really surprised. I was in front of a council and they say, um, you know what what I do, council said to me, a council member said to me, I go and file it on behalf of the of the resident. Go, why would you do that? You're you're the council member. I said, you're now going to what, give evidence and it's gonna be all hearsay? They go, oh, I've got photographs. I go, did you take the photographs? Because you're gonna be asked. Did you take them? And you'll have to say, no, they're not worth anything. If you didn't take the photographs, that's wrong. You can't do that. But please, don't go in and 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 try to exert any kind of pressure, any kind of influence on on the by law enforcement officers. Like members of committees that you appoint, the Committee of Adjustment, by law enforcement officers are appointed by council, right? If you start asking them to do something, you're putting them in a really bad position because they might say, these are the people who appoint me. If I don't do what they're saying or asking, this is a problem. Now, is it wrong for you to ask a by law enforcement officer what may be occurring in a matter? Okay, maybe not. You you're interested in knowing what's happening in your municipality. I get that. But there's ways of asking and there's ways of, you know, sort of telling. So you have to be really careful. Just because you may ask a question, the person who's inferring what you're telling them may see it as some sort of direction and that may put you offside, right? So you gotta be really careful. There's also things that by law enforcement officers just can't tell you, right? It's privacy concerns, right, under under M F I P. Uh, so you can't, you have to respect the discretion and independence of law enforcement officers. You can't interfere in any way with the administration of justice. Remember, as by law enforcement officers, they sometimes have to prosecute and they have an obligation to the public, not necessarily to what a council member wants or even what council wants. They have an obligation in the public interest, right, as as prosecutors. Uh, building permit issuance, this is the big one. We always get this all the time. You know, I don't understand why the building official is being such a stickler. You don't need that size of diameter of pipe. Something smaller will work. Hold on. Who's the expert here? Is it your 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 building officials or and your your inspectors? Or is it a member of council? Or or worse, is it the resident who wants something to happen and saying, oh, this'll work? Well, if it'll work, there are ways of making it work. There's, you know, innovative processes and other things. You can go in front of the Building Code Commission and get a ruling. But you can't tell the chief building official, we know the building code says this, look the other way. There are health and safety concerns, right? Can't can't do that. Uh, council cannot tell the chief building official to issue a permit or not issue a permit or to hurry up in issuing the permit, right? That's that's wrong. Independent statutory authority there. Same with inspectors on their inspection. You can't interfere. You could create significant liability to the municipality if you do so. If you just say, just look the other way, right? What happens? Something goes wrong, catastrophic problems, right? And who's gonna be liable ultimately? Well, the chief building official, maybe, but section thirty one of the building code, right? Who's ultimately liable vicariously? The municipality, right? Closed meetings? I've talked about this before. I won't. I won't. I won't beat it down to to death. Confidential information is defined very broadly in your code of conduct. I looked it up, right? You cannot disclose, disseminate, distribute in whole or in part, any closed meeting information. If council releases the information by a reporting out or or council at a subsequent meeting says, okay, you know what, that information, it's okay, we're gonna release it. Council can do this. This is something that I struggle. There's always a struggle with council in a new term. So here's my take on it. You could always ask potentially your integrity commissioner or your legal counsel, Mr. You worked for for an opinion on this. You're a new member of council. Something happened last term. Are you entitled to get to the closed meeting information that council last term had? Here's my view. No. The information is given to the council at the time it's given for council to make a decision at that time. A new member of council who wasn't privy to that decision-making process and wasn't a member of council is not entitled to get that information. That's my view. Okay? Now, yes, Mr. Dunn?
Mr. Mascaren, just on that point, many times matters go from one council to another.
Right.
Um, and when the file continues in the subsequent council, those new members of council would need to be read in and understand the decisions of a prior council as they make an informed decision going forward.
You're absolutely correct. So what would happen in that case? The council member who was in that position or council members who were in that position would say to council, we need to have that information and it's been continuing. We need to know what what you did. Otherwise, we don't have the context. But it's still council's decision because I believe it resides there. Now, would council be acting in bad faith if they didn't turn over? That's a really interesting question, which I won't weigh into right now. But I hear your point. If it's continuing and you have members, new members, I think you do have at least a couple of new members of council. I mean, they may need to know what that information is in order to make a fully informed decision. And I think council probably wouldn't be acting honorably if it didn't allow them to do that, if it was a continuing matter. Now, if it was a new matter, let's say, I don't know, there was a dismissal of somebody and that person wants to get it because maybe that person feels the person wasn't dismissed properly or something. I'm not sure you could get to that information. You shouldn't be entitled to, unless council says, sure, you can have a look at it. So confidential information, meetings to run effectively and efficiently. Mr. Mayor, I mentioned this before. This is one of your obligations under two twenty five B. You, the chair has to run efficient and effective meetings of of council. So I say, please, please read the procedure bylaw. Know what it says because it tells you how things come forward, how you bring a notice of motion. And if you're bringing a notice of motion, why don't you run it by the clerk? The clerk will help you. In fact, won't the clerk be happy to help with notices of motion? So then, you know, you don't have the debate right in front of council, like a lot of this come forward, didn't you? You know, and then and then you have problems. The procedure bylaw though should not be weaponized or or abused, right? There are ways, people get very crafty and then you try to abuse it, right? Shouldn't be bogged down. Meetings shouldn't get bogged down with little pettiness and, you know, points of order and, you know, points of personal privilege, procedural technicalities to stymie council, you know, filibustering, you know, things like that. So you should always think the procedure bylaw is there to foster local democracy and to make meetings run efficiently. So sometimes you might have a twenty minute speech, but sometimes that's just inappropriate for the council meeting, right? And, Mr. Mayor, sometimes you have to put the hammer down. It's tough. That's one of the roles and it's and, you know, you're not being a bad guy because sometimes you're saying councillor, I I've heard, we've heard it enough already, like we need to move on. That's the proper role. You have that. Of course, ultimately, you have the power to expel someone, too. Did you ever do that, Mr. Mayor?
I believe I need a vote of council to expel somebody. I can. I can recommend that they calm down.
Well, uh, my view is, I think, section two forty one gives you the authorities, two forty one sub two, I think, gives you the direct authority to do it with unilaterally. I don't think you need counsel. Now, if your procedure bylaw might say something else that's a little different, I would say, but then, as the mayor with direct statutory authority to do something, would your procedure bylaw be frustrating the statutory provision and then it would be invalid under section fifteen or fourteen? The municipal act. So I think you have, you have the authority to do that. I have seen it done. It's most, most heads of council don't like to do it. They like, they don't like to do it, but sometimes you have to do that.
Mr. Mascaren, before you, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to drag things up from previous, previous, previous Romero Township Council sessions. But my understanding is there was an expulsion from chambers of a member of council a number of years ago. We have an opportunity to run that by Mr. Mascaren, sir, I without going back in time. But it was a challenging spot.
Well, my preference is always to take a break when I these things getting out of hand. Take a break, try again. And and that's what I've always done. And I've always gone under the authority that, yes, though I can, I would only do it if I knew I had the support of my council. And but I can recess a meeting and I can adjourn a meeting if it's out of control. But again, very reluctant to do that.
Yep. And I and, Mr. Mayor, I respect that. I I I fully understand and and many, many will do that. Let's just take a breather. Let's cool down the temperature in the room. However, I I was, I was very close to subsection two forty one sub two, the power to expel. The head of council or other presiding officer may expel any person for improper conduct at a meeting. But, Mr. Mayor, I think you were saying you take a more conciliatory approach. You're saying, hey, people get heated sometimes. Let's just take a break and that's.
I I was on council once when we expelled the mayor through a vote of council and banned him from future council meetings until he apologized.
Yeah, and that has happened. The other thing I want to say about meetings is the open meeting rule in section two thirty nine is there for to allow the public to observe local government, not with all due respect to the people in the, not to participate, right? The Supreme Court of Canada and R S J Holdings and City of London, two thousand and six, said very clearly, the open meeting rule is not for participation, it's for observance. So people can see local democracy in action. However, councils can put in certain rules to allow delegations or open forums or open mics and you can do that. There's a very, very interesting case. It's one of the most interesting cases that I've read in the last couple of years. It's the one at the very bottom here, Mann versus Soggin Shores. Mr. Mann is a lawyer, criminal lawyer, and he was very, very upset at what the municipality was doing at a waterfront development. And he continued to hammer away, would not take note as an answer for an answer when when this pally wanted to do something to develop the the waterfront. And he was allowed, I think, on twenty six separate occasions to make deputations or delegations in front of council. But he was denied eleven times. And he said, you've breached my right to freedom of expression. This is a fascinating case because, you know, sometimes someone has a germ of a good idea and then they abuse it. And that's what Mr. Mann did in this case. So he argued his right to freedom of expression meant that he was entitled to effective representation in front of the governing body, whether it was the provincial, federal or local government. The court said, actually, yes, we agree with that. He said, the restrictions in the procedure by law for Soggin Shores that say, I can't raise a matter that's already been talked about within the last six months. I can't talk about a matter that's in litigation. I can't use profane language. He says, those are all restrictions on my right to freedom of expression, to express myself the way I want to in front of my council. And the court said, you're right, there's, those are restrictions on freedom of expression. However, it turned to section one, said, these are reasonable limits on the right to freedom of expression. You can't just go and say anything you want. It would bog down the machinery of 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 council and meetings. The court did a really great analysis. It said, how does council conduct its business at meetings? The mayor is supposed to run them effectively and efficiently. And if we allow this, it's abusing the effectiveness and the efficiency of of council meetings. Plus, they said, two other things. Every level of government has rules of procedure for their meetings, federal, provincial, there's municipal, not difference. The procedure by law in this case was actually bought modeled on the standard kind of procedure by law that you see in most municipalities. So it was a reasonable limit, seeking to balance the objectives of freedom of expression against the restrictions. He also argued this point, which was really fascinating. He also argued, my right to effective representation means not only can I tell council what I want, when I want and how I want, which counts, which the court said, that's not true, but also said, the council members must respond to me. That is effective representation. They're just shutting me down. He says, that's just not fair. So this is really fascinating. I think I told Robin this. You, as members of council, probably have people all the time writing to you. Mr. Mayor, I wrote to you twelve times and you didn't respond. Oh, my God, you know, you're breaching my rights under the charter. You're not. You can actually at some point say, you know what, I'm shutting you down. And the court said this. He said, the way you have defined effective representation, meaning you can stand in front of people, ask any question you want, how you want, and you're demanding that they respond to you, is just a fallacy. That's just not the law and there's no way that's gonna happen. So I've often said to council, and I've said this to Robin many times, you have a certain segment, individual, special intersteepe that's just won't stop. You don't have to answer them. Just say, I'm not gonna answer them anymore. Now, you may not be able Just say, I'm not gonna answer them anymore. Now, you may not be able to block them from social media, right? But you don't. Have an obligation. And I often used to say to Robin, just don't engage, because what they want you to do is engage. It doesn't matter how articulate, how correct. You are in answering their, their, their responses. They'll just gonna find a way around it. Or like Donald Trump, just make things up as he goes along, right? And, you know, issue inanities out of his, out of his mouth. Which make no sense whatsoever. You do not have to respond. Now, I, I fully see some court someday saying, well, you were unreasonable, like, you know, you shut them down after one email, right? But if you have, you know, those constant noisy neighbor kind of people who keep coming back to you, keep, you know, you don't have to respond to them. Uh, just don't engage. Sometimes that's the best advice I can give. So the man in Soggin Shores, really, really interesting decision. Uh, councillor code of conduct, you have to respect the council decisions, right? I, I, I'm surprised this actually has to find its way into a code of conduct. You would have thought that that was the law, but. You know, you have. So here, here's from your code. Members shall accurately and adequately communicate the decisions of council and local boards such that respect. For the decision and decision-making process is fostered. You have to respect council. Come on, you ran for council, you decided to be on the council. How can then you turn back and go, well, now I'm an anarchist? Right? You have to respect the council decisions. You are a member of council. It may have not gone your way, fair enough, right? It might come back around another day, right? So. There must be respect for council's decision-making process, even if the member personally, privately, ethically disagrees with the majority decision. You have to stand down, right? You have to respect the will of council that's made the decision. And that requirement is supported by a number of other provisions in your code of conduct. And finally, uh, I want to talk about representation. I know you have a ward system here at your municipality. And every once in a while, you may say, well, I'm representing the people who elected me and I'm beholden to them. Wrong. You're a representative of everybody in the municipality. Yes, your ward may have elected some of you to be. On council, but when you become a council member, just like when the mayor and deputy mayor are on county council. They at county council represent all the residents in Simcoe County. You as ward councillors represent. Everyone in the municipality, okay? Not just. That, that group that elected you or that special interest group, whether it's environmental, political. Social, um, religious, you don't represent just those people. You represent everybody. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm, I'm at the conclusion, um, I'm going to show you right here. The quote that I showed you partially before, because I just want to expand on it. If you haven't read this, please do. It's a, it's from municipal affairs, especially for new council members. It's a great short. Way into your role. The other reading that I would mandate is, yes, my book, no, um. My, the calling with judicial inquiry, at least volume one, it's, it's sort of required reading. But here, role of councillor, I showed you part of this quote before. Three main roles to play, representative policymakers steward, they overlap. Here's what I didn't show you. You will often, you will be called upon to consider and make decisions on issues that are somewhat, sometimes complex and controversial. Many of those decisions will have long-term consequences. For the municipality that extend beyond your four years of council term, right? And should be made in the context of municipality's plans for the long-term health and welfare of your community. This is what best efforts, best interests of, sorry, the best interests of your municipality are. So here's, here's, here's my takeaway from this. Many of those decisions will have long-term consequences. Now. Staff understand that you are, and please, don't, don't take this pejoratively, but you're politicians, you're political animals. You do look. And say, I'm elected for a four-year term. If residents don't like what I'm doing, I may be out of office. Your staff is not only here for four years. Now, they will be aware of that. Your senior staff understand this. But are they going to be giving you impartial, objective, wise, experienced? Knowledge-based advice, just so you can be reelected? If they do so, they are really bad staff members. They will not do so. Mr. Dunn will not do so. I've known him for many years. He's had to stand up to difficult councils at difficult times, be with him a few times. And have to face the music. We cannot, staff cannot, your legal counsel cannot just say to you what you want to hear. So there is a tension there because staff are looking at things very long-term. You may be looking at things maybe a bit more short-term. And I say that's. That's, that's a mistake. You have to look at things long-term and you can't be upset with staff. If they come back and say to you, that's not what our official plan is indicating we should do. We pass, we have a strategic plan. We have all these other things. For the long-term health, welfare of our community, this is a really, really bad decision. You can't do that. You have to listen to them and you can't be upset at them. Remember, some persons have professional responsibilities. Your planner, for instance, your chief planner, may have responsibilities under a code of conduct of, oh, no, PPI designation. Where they have to make decisions, planning decisions for the general public interest, not just for what their client wants. That's why they may make decisions, you may disagree with, with the recommendation and that's fine. But then they may be subpoenaed and you can't be upset if they're subpoenaed by the other side. And they give their testimony as they feel it's, it's appropriate. Your treasurer probably is a, a CCA CPA. Also has obligations under that regulatory body where they have to make certain lawyers too. I, I've turned down, um. One the other day where someone wanted to fight a deck and said, money is no object. I want you to find a way to challenge this. I go. What is it that you're upset about? Is it applicable law? Yeah, it's zoning. I go, it complies with zoning. Well, it's the conservation authority is regulation. What? It's not anywhere near a, you know, a floodplain or it's not. I said, what are you talking about here? She goes, money, I, I'm telling you, John, I just want you to research. I said, I'm not taking this file. I go, you know, as an officer of the, of the, of the court. I'm not gonna stand in front of a judge and make some stupid argument, my reputation is state, but more importantly. The integrity of the process is at stake and I'm not gonna do it. I turned it down. I think she was just literally shocked. Cause she wrote to my managing partner. I thought, oh, that's really mischievous. Managing partner is probably saying, are you gonna turn down this file? Yes, bloody yes. Tell me, tell me something else because I'm not gonna do it. And she said, no, I respect your decision. But I thought that was, that was pretty bad. So, again, staff. Is going to give you the straight goods. Please don't be mad at them when they, when they do. So here's, here's final, final conclusions. Council. What's your role? Governance, policy setting. The administration is management operations day to day. There should be no micromanaging of, of, uh, of what staff do. You can set policy, you can talk to your CAO if you'd like to make changes at, at, you know, that level. But you don't go in and say to, uh, to anybody, your public works person, you know, um. I don't like the way this, this painting is on here. I want you to repaint. You have no authority to do that. Um, the, the best example I can give of this is, uh, with liability is you don't step into the roles of staff. There's this true story. I used to call it the Zamboni incident, right? You're at the, uh, rec center. Uh, you're at, you're one of your arenas, you're watching a hockey game, a ice skating competition, and the Zamboni driver comes out, right? You're looking, you're going, wow, she's doing a terrible job. She's not cleaning the ice surface. What do you do as a member of council? Perhaps you come back and say to Mr. Dunn, like, Robin, like, you know, speak to the, uh, to the public works director. What you don't do is you don't go elbow her out of the way and get on the Zamboni and start driving it around. Now, you're probably going, okay, ridiculous. This happened to us. We were asked to investigate a council member. I'm gonna limit the, the scope here. We had a municipality that was an island. One council member had a historical dispute with the ferry, did not like the ferry captain. One day. Cold November day, ooh, it was really cold. Everybody's waiting for the ferry captain to come back. Where is he? No one knows. The council member takes off, starts driving the ferry away from the mainland. You cannot do that. That's the Zamboni incident. What happens if the ferry had crashed, right? Incredible liability. You can't do that. You just can't do that. A more recent example is a council member went and fixed. Purportedly fixed the cupboards in the locker room of a sports, and then they fell down. No one was drastically injured, but the thing fell down. He wasn't a carpenter. What's he doing? You know, he's saying, as a council member, I just want to make things good. There's ways to do with it. So. You are the decision-making body, the, the arm up here. Council member is part of a collective body. You're part of an assembly. Never forget that. You must act in the public interest. You have no individual. Ministerial executive powers and you are beholden to council. Just because you don't like a bylaw, resolution of policy. We found this out during COVID, right? Just because you didn't like it, didn't mean that you didn't have to comply with those regulations. If council put them in place, council put them in place. So my final takeaway, the executive branch council must work with the staff. To make sure everything works optimally. Mr. Mayor, that's the end. Um, I've gone maybe a little longer than I had anticipated. I'm happy to take any other questions that anyone may have or anything else that they'd like to ask or comment on.
Any questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor to you.
I had a question regarding, um, reporting a complaint on behalf of a resident. Some residents are quite, uh, senior or maybe not online or don't know what to do. And in the past, I have offered to file it for them on their behalf. And I say in the. Body of the complaint that it is on their behalf. Should I not be doing even that?
I, with all respect, I think not. I think that's a bad idea. What happens if the other side says, I want discovery, I want disclosure, which they're entitled to. You become a witness. All of a sudden, you're involved. They're gonna say, well, you saw something, you were involved. All of a sudden, you may be offside, potentially the code. You might end up speaking to the bylaw enforcement officer. The, the person who's being complained of will go, see, she was influencing the bylaw enforcement officer. You're gonna say, I just filed a complaint and I had to talk to him about it. They're gonna say, sure, you did, right? And it's, it's a problem. You're gonna go to, if it's gonna go to court, that's a real problem. I think you should really stay away. I understand what you're, you're doing it from a good place. You're saying, look. Seniors, uh, people who may be disabled in some way, you're just trying to help, but I think that's the wrong way. You could always. Let the bylaw enforcement officer know that there's some sensitivity. Perhaps the bylaw enforcement officer could have a conversation. They would know the chain of evidence, how all of the prosecutorial. Stuff works, which I don't know that well, you know, and know how to properly advise them and maybe help them along. Maybe they will file the complaint, maybe they won't. Right? But I think it's, I think it's wrong for the, the council member to do that.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, John. Excellent presentation, very informative and entertaining.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to come in front of you. It's, uh, it's been my pleasure. Thank you to Robin Dunn for asking me and I hope it's been informative and, uh. I'm happy if you have any further questions that come up to, to answer them as, as required. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just for council, Mr. Mascaren, at the beginning of your presentation. You did indicate, uh, that the clerk would be able to share, uh, your presentation with members of council.
Thank you, sir. So I, I, I know we're gonna break for lunch, but we've got some folks here. So I, I wanna certainly get the transport. If you don't mind, sir, what do you hear to? Okay, all right then. So I'm gonna go transportation services, uh, and that's no disrespect to you, John. Thank you very much. Councillor Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item on the agenda today. Um, it's item four point one. Road name review phase one, recommendation that we receive report ID fifty-two dash twenty-four dated September third, twenty twenty-four. And that the following roads previously identified to committee the whole on May eighth, twenty twenty-three be named, renamed as recommended. Bayview Drive be renamed Eddie Green Drive, Concession Road Six, West of Merrick Carden Boundary Road be. Renamed Ruttle Road, Concession Seven, West of Merrick Carden Boundary Road be renamed Black Beach Lane. Concession Road Eight, East of Muley Point Road, Decide Road Twenty, from Concession Road Eight to the lake. Be renamed Barnstable Drive, Concession Road Eight, the unnamed portion. Be named Four J Way, Concession Nine, between Muley Point Road and Side Road Twenty be renamed Ross Road. Concession Twelve, East of Side Road Five, be renamed Klondike Road. Concession Road Twelve, West of Fair Valley Road, County Road One Sixty-Nine, be renamed Cahill Road. Concession Road Twelve, West of Kirkfield Road, renamed Stanovic Place. Concession Road Thirteen, West of Kirkfield Road, be renamed Mondays Lane. And Side Road Fifteen, South of Concession Road A, be renamed Mirror Road. Can somebody put that on the floor for me? Uh, councillor to you and councillor Fisher, discussions, Mr. Mayor.
To the eighth concession, then we're going all the way to Bay Shore's Gate, right? Yeah, cause it's a continuous road now. So good. I'm glad to see that. Don't we have a Black Beach Lane?
Yeah, it's the private road is Black Beach Lane, so we're just suggesting to name that whole section.
Okay.
Is the private to be.
Okay, so, yep, nope, that's good. That's all I had.
Any further questions, discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? That is so passed. Any unfinished new business from members of council? Seeing none, I have one that I had, uh, discussed with Josh, uh, moving forward. I think we really need to look at our ditching practices in urban areas, so that if. People, our residents were able to cut their ditch before they, when we're done ditching, they should remain being able to cut the ditch. Um, so I don't know if that's a report data, I think for a future meeting, sir.
I'm hearing similar things from residents on Creighton Street who are now having ditching done. They're just hoping that it's restored to the way that it was. So that it does have that layer of mowable grass. But obviously drainage is most important. So if there's. An ability to reconcile the two, that would be great.
Yeah, so I'd like to have a, maybe a report going forward, because I know. Come budget time, you may have to increase the ditching budget if we're doing a different procedure. Do I need a motion for that? Okay, I, can somebody put that on the floor for me? Councillor Fisher, second by, also Bell. All in favor of that report moving forward?
Sure. Can I just, yeah, just, can I have one, one quick question? I guess we gotta be careful about when they say return to the way it was, because if we return to the way it was initially twenty-five years ago. Then it's not something they can actually, right? So I think we gotta be careful not to set our operations team up.
Yeah, well, I know, um. CAO Dunn and I had a, a meeting with a, a resident and he was talking about. Um, ditching operations in previous municipalities that he had worked in, where they actually had a. A lawnmower base with no engine on it, but if. The Works Department could actually move along more up and down without. Too much of an effort, then that's how the ditch.
Yeah, the only other thing we have to keep in mind, a lot of the ditches in the municipality haven't been done in probably thirty-plus years. So thirty years of sediment in the ditch, as well as people putting material in the ditch to make it accessible to be able to cut the grass. If we're excavating the ditches to make drainage work, it's not necessarily going to be to a point that's. Going to allow for cutting of the ditch easily. The only way to allow cutting of the ditch easily would be to expand into private property, which I don't know if that's something you want to do. Um, because we get into the whole litigation of its private property. So I, I can include it all in the report, but in the previous report of ditching practices, I think we encompassed a lot of that information in there. Um, so I'm not sure what additional information you're looking at with that. Maybe it is a capital equipment purchase to be able to cut those ditches. But even cutting those ditches is additional staff to be able to do that. So it's, we will have to look at the big picture with everything, so.
Could we maybe just, could we maybe just have Josh come back with that same report? We could look at that. Instead of doing the work and really can have a good discussion about it? Instead of doing the work and really can have a good discussion about it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any uh? Further new or unfinished business? Seeing none, back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm gonna jump ahead to Protective Services cuz I understand that John has, has to leave. So councillor Bell, you could take that, please.
Thank you. We have, I think, just one item on the agenda, so it's uh. By law enforcement second quarter report, and the recommendation is that committee of the whole receive the bylaw enforcement department's second quarter report, CD twenty-two twenty-four is information. And that committee of the whole receive information related to the township's processes for complaints related to dead or damaged trees on municipal and private property. Somebody can put that on the floor. Deputy Mayor, second by. Councillor Goff, and I will go right to you, please, Mr. Popple.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Um, so this is the quarterly report. For April, May and June of twenty twenty-four. Um, it was again another busy start to the summer season for the bylaw enforcement department. You can see that uh. Over those few months, we uh, we were just over two hundred complaints, at two hundred and eighteen total complaints. Um, with the majority being in canine control, uh, long grass violations. Um, property standards. Zoning and short-term rental accommodations, keeping in mind that. The short-term rental accommodations portion, a lot of those are proactive with our online searches of uh. Locations operating without or advertising without licenses. Um, but again, uh, we hired our full complement of seasonal officers plus our full-time staff. To address those concerns. During those months, um, we did issue a number of administrative monetary penalties under a couple of bylaws, the long grass. And the short-term rental accommodations by law. Um, and you can see that uh, in June, we had a significant amount of uh, amps issued forty-five. Under the long grass by law. And during those months, the fines totaled just over seventy-seven thousand dollars um, as a result of enforcement activities. Um, and as requested, uh, at a previous committee of the whole meeting. Um, I have provided information on our process. For both addressing dead or damaged trees on township property. Which is obviously done through the um, reported concern portal on our website where it can be reported in our infrastructure department. We'll take a look at the tree and make the appropriate decision as to whether it should be removed immediately or um, at a further scheduled date. And then uh, for private property utilizing the system under our property standards by law. Um, to address those, those dead or damaged trees. Um, we can issue orders to comply under the property standards by law to have a portion or all of the tree removed if it's clearly dead. If it's an immediate danger. Um, we can also issue emergency orders to have those trees removed. And uh, there's multiple options under that by law to address those trees. So I feel that we have the appropriate tools are required. Um, to address those dead trees on both municipal and uh, private property, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Any questions? Councillor Snatch.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Um. John, on the page two there, it basically is going through five months of fines. Um, can you give us any indication where these fines are being? Paid? Are they just being left unpaid or are they being challenged?
Um. We, we are getting some challenges through the appeals committee, so both. Um, fines uh, issued under long grass and the short-term mental accommodations by law can be appealed to that, that committee. Um, we've seen about. Um. Ten appeals this year, so certainly not the majority are being appealed, only the minority are. Um, and we are seeing the payment of those fines. However, a, a lot of them do go unpaid. Through the invoicing process, and that's why they're added to municipal taxes. So at some point. We will see payment of those fines, um, whether it's the sale of the property or when they receive their uh, their tax invoices and they, they pay those bills.
Uh, just one follow-up. Um. So if we took the um. When you say appeal, do you mean they're being appealed through our normal processes within the township? Or are they going above and beyond to another level of government?
No, so these are not appealable to another level of government. They're appealed through our appeals tribunal. So the long grass by law and short-term rentals are within the mandate of the appeals tribunal. And they go to that level of court.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so the, the matters on the floor, all in favor of receiving? Oops, geez. Sorry. Okay, so that's carried. Uh, thank you, John. Uh, is there any other newer unfinished business? No? Okay, I'll pass it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. I've got administration and finance, councillor Snatch.
I think I remember. There are no items on the agenda for today. Um, do, do we have any uh, new unfinished business? Yes, uh, councillor Goff.
Thank you, councillor Snatch. I've been watching this council. Struggle with. Our upcoming budget, last year's budget. Um, I know we had uh. Municipal accommodation tax in place. At the end of last term of council, and it. This council had decided to. Move away from that. I think as being a responsible municipal councillor and. We need to look at innovative ways to. Increase our revenue flow. Without putting it on the backs of. Our taxpayers. So I would like to see that we move forward with a municipal accommodation tax maybe factored into. Our budget as to see what kind of a, a benefit it could make. To our municipality. Um, so I'd like to put that on the floor if I have a second or for that motion.
So you are, you are making a motion then, and what exactly is your motion then?
That it comes back, be included. That we're looking at having four percent municipal accommodation tax. Uh, considered in budget and ramifications. Of that.
For two thousand and twenty-five?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have, uh, so you're putting the motion on the floor. Do we have a second or, uh, councillor Fisher? Um. And now it's on the floor, I guess, so um, do we have any questions or comments from the council? Okay, well. Up, sorry, uh, councillor to you.
Wouldn't mat tax be applicable to short-term rentals?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I won't support it. I didn't support it originally. Uh, again, short-term rentals, we have trouble even getting them licensed, let alone try and figure out, and so many of them are private. They would never disclose to us how much, what their rentals are and how much they're getting. It's one thing if they're with a company like Airbnb, which is. More than willing to deal with the local municipality with the bookings. Many of ours are just private, and I don't see how you'd ever chase that money down. Well, we know. Anyway, with that's, I won't support it. I just don't agree in finding new ways to bring money in against our tourism department. I, I think we, the services we deliver. Uh, are paid for by the citizens here. The mat tax was always geared towards spending the largest majority of that money promoting tourism. That's what it was brought into effect for, and we're allowed to keep fifty percent to spend how we see fit, but. The reason it was brought in place was to promote tourists. And I just don't see that as something that I'm, I'm going to tax those, the few businesses we have in the tourism industry. I'm not gonna take their money to promote them. I'll let them promote themselves. Therefore, I, I won't be asking for it to be included in budget. Um, councillor Goff.
Uh, but Mr. Mayor, you're mistaken, and when you're saying that you're getting them to pay it. They're not paying it. It's people that are actually coming into our municipality that are paying that mat tax. Right? All they are is collecting it, much like the HST that they collect. So it's not them that are paying it. Mr. Mayor.
Any other uh, questions? Um. Sorry, Manon, please go ahead.
Um, if we want to implement the mat tax, uh, this is something council can request. However, it couldn't be included in a twenty twenty-five budget. It's a long process. And until we have clear direction of. Um, our portion, like the fifty percent uh, that we're allowed to keep. Uh, I can't include it in the budget, like I don't have enough information. So it's something we could look at in twenty twenty-five. And then maybe bring it back for the twenty twenty-six budget because. The twenty twenty-five budget is going to be presented to council in less than a month, so there's no way we can have everything in place for twenty twenty-five.
So, um, do you wanna change your um, motion to twenty twenty-six then, councillor Goff?
Well, um, I think that there's probably a lot more information that you may already be privy to. Manon, because. It was supposed to have been in place for twenty twenty-three, so a lot of the information and the legwork should have already been in place. Cuz it was supposed to start in May of twenty twenty-three. Um. So I know. Our previous CAO Zach had done a lot of work. Uh, with numbers, so I don't know if you have access to. What maybe there?
Do you wanna change your motion to twenty twenty-six, or do you wanna keep your motion at twenty twenty-five?
I think we need to have it. In place sooner than later, uh, whether it's. May of. Twenty twenty-five that it moves forward, would that give you enough? Time or?
So what I meant is it can be brought back for twenty twenty-five, but it won't be part of the budget because. I have like three weeks to figure out everything, so there's no way I can add this to it. Um, but it doesn't mean it can't be done in twenty twenty-five. It just won't be part of the budget. Which is also um, not a bad thing because we have to make assumption. On how many rooms are rent, what, what are the costs and all of that? And um. I, I think it would be wise to get some numbers in, so if we choose to go ahead and implement it, let's say just. Uh, a month, just. May, maybe twenty twenty-five, then we would have data in twenty twenty-five and then include it in twenty twenty-six budget. But that money could be collected and just kept in reserve to do tourism projects or whatever council wished to do with it.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with it. If it's on the table and it comes back. At the beginning of the new year. Or maybe implementation.
Okay, so we just need the motion again then.
Motion, please. We've exchanged.
That we look at. Implementing a. Municipal accommodation tax. In twenty twenty-five. Is that? Satisfied? And if the second is okay with that?
Any other questions or comments from council? Uh, I will have my own comment. Uh, the reason I was opposed to this before is cuz I believe there was only three. Uh, motels or hotels uh, that would be paying this. Um, if you wanna include the short-term rental, um, I do believe that the last time that the fees went from one thousand to three thousand dollars. It was basically because it would generate um, more money to be coming into the township. Um, instead of um, the two thousand dollar increase would be more money for us to use for by law. Rather than do it through the four percent tax, which we would only get fifteen, uh, fifty percent of. So I just wanted to bring those up, but if there's no other, I'm, oh, sorry, councillor to you.
I just wanted to say I've got a, you know, resort and campgrounds in my ward who feel pretty strongly or did at the time against the. Two percent mat tax from a few years ago, so I'm quite certain they wouldn't be comfortable with a four percent mat tax, uh. Given the uh. Downturn in tourism and so on post-COVID, so I, I wouldn't support this.
Oh, okay, so, oh, councillor Bell?
Thank you. I, I think just uh, to, to what you said, councillor Snatch, the um, the amp. The amps or the licensing fees related to short-term rental accommodations, that was about cost recovery for short-term rental, and it didn't, it, it wasn't meant to be used for, for tourism. Um, or, or investing into tourism. So I, I just wanna say they're two different pieces. Um, and I guess while we're talking about this too, I would, I would point out that um. Having successfully implemented in Aurelia, um, they have found themselves now with quite a bit of uh. Pocket money, if you will, to be able to start driving some good initiatives um, for the Aurelia and Lake Country region. So I think we should also be cognizant that. Um, this is now um, a staple, and typically. People don't even recognize that they're paying it because i- it's just part of your bill when you check out of a hotel or whatever kind of accommodation, so. Um, the burden is not on, on the hotel or the, the operator. It, it's, it's becoming um. Uh, run-of-the-mill, that when you visit, you'll, you'll pay that, that tax. So I, I think we just wanna keep that in mind as we're considering.
Okay, a final note for myself before we go to a vote, but uh, based on the deputations, the last time we did this. Um, the business owners came in and said that they disagreed that this is paid by the residents, that basically it affects their room rates and how much they can charge. So I just wanted to bring back the memory of that deputation that was uh, done here. So we're going to vote now. I don't see any other hands up. Uh, all in favor of the motion? That motion fails. Um, are there any other new or unfinished business? Back to you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go to Culture and Recreation, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, there is nothing on the agenda today, any unfinished or new business? Not seeing any. I just had one quick question. Do we have anybody from Parks, uh, from Parks and Rec? She had a question about the uh, flag football, if somebody was here.
Justine is here, I'll get her.
Okay, perfect. I'm just curious if we've settled on a day, if she's communicated with the schools, cuz I know theirs is started up and just trying to see.
Be quite pleased with the information she's gonna provide.
Perfect. Sorry to put you on the spot. I was just looking for an update on the flag football. They said you had some great news, so.
We do this often. Um, yeah, so we have great news about flag football. We have twenty-four um, people registered for the program. It starts tomorrow. Um, and we've got two volunteer coaches and a few high school students that are volunteering as well. Um, so it looks like it's gonna be a successful program start.
Fantastic. Great job on that. Thank you. I don't know if there's any comments or anybody else want to say? Okay, back to the mayor. Thanks a lot.
And I will go to Environmental Services, councillor to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is one item on the agenda today, seven point one mosquito aerial larva sighting expansion. Uh, ID fifty-one twenty-four. Recommendation that we receive report ID fifty-one twenty-four. And that we approve the aerial larva sighting program for twenty twenty-five and pre-approve the budgeted amount of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That will be funded by taxation. And that staff start working on tendering and permit applications for the twenty twenty-five application. Uh, can somebody please put this on the floor? Councillor Fisher, second by councillor Goff, thank you. Um. I guess Josh, thank you very much for your detailed investigation that went into the report. Before opening it up for questions and discussion, did you want to talk about it?
Uh, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. So from the last report at the previous committee meeting. I was asked to bring further information of how to proceed. Um. So this kinda outlines what is required if we were to proceed uh, with the program. And the timeline it'll take to do that. So if there's any questions on it. I'd be happy to take them and answer what it can.
Thanks. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments? Councillor Snatch.
Thank you. Um. There has been a lot of uh, comments and letters that I think we've all received. Um, I like to do a little bit of um. Clarity in those emails, and most of those emails were referring to, um, there is no public opinion yet. Uh, we don't know what the support of the program is. Um, you know, whether or not we're competing with local businesses, whether we're messing up the food chain. Uh, potential lawsuits that might come twenty years from now down the road. Uh, just like we all thought cigarettes and Roundup and asbestos were safe at one time in our point, but I wanna sort of leave those uh, issues alone to just talk about the money. Um, this is a huge expense for the township. I think the number was six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, if you compare that to some of the other budgets that we have in the township, uh, it's pretty shocking. Um if you compare that to some of the other budgets that we have in the township, uh it's pretty shocking. Uh the library only has a budget of four hundred and eighty thousand, uh but a hundred and fifty thousand less than what we want to use to just spray uh for mosquitoes. The medical center, we only spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on a year. Um about twenty five percent of what we want to spend on the mosquitoes. Bylaw, not even our bylaw department is six hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Bylaw is about five seventy two. By the way, I've got the actual budget right here that was just given to me and updated. So um these numbers are real. The recreation department is only two hundred and eleven K. And if you go to even the community centers, all three community centers combined is less than a hundred thousand dollars. The entire trails budget, which we probably put in forty thousand and Simcoe puts in forty thousand, is only eighty thousand dollars a year. And economic development, which I know everybody is so concerned here, our budget um for twenty twenty four is fifty eight thousand dollars. That's less than ten percent of what we're going to use for mosquito spraying. Now, I it may be early, but I'm going to put a motion on the floor uh to scrap the expansion of this program. Um the reason I'm doing it this way um is I don't want staff to spend a lot of time um analyzing and surveying this. If we get through all the other points, like it's safe, like it's not competing with the businesses and we're not going to get sued, um we still can't afford it. And I guess the township can afford it because we pass it on to the residents. It's the residents that can't afford it. We're coming up with a, this alone is four point three percent increase. And if you take, I, well, the numbers are all in here, so I won't repeat them. But there's a lot of, your house is being assessed at five thousand dollars, which I, or five thousand, five hundred thousand dollars, which is probably every single waterfront property in the township. That's like, uh, sorry, what is that? That's two hundred dollars a year. So I don't think we should be telling residents to um pay for this program compared to the other ones that we do. The last, the reason that I'm bringing it up and my motion will be, as I say, to squash uh this program entirely with no more work doing on it. And the reason I've put it that way um is because councillor Bell has referred to a few things in the past about um, don't quote me, but being pigeonholed on some of these decisions. So I knew there probably would be a motion coming up to defer this. And if I voted to, uh if I, uh because I want it killed, if I vote to defer it, that's not meeting the objective. And if I vote not to defer it, it sounds like I'm approving it. So that's why, and I'm, uh I will make the motion that we squash um this entire uh project and leave it as it is uh for where it's already in place. But my key indication is that after doing, if we go through a lot of work, we're going to find out that less than ten percent of people, maybe fifteen, uh want this program in place. It would rather keep their own money in their own pockets to deal with the uh situation uh the way they see fit for their own property.
Uh I will, and I think the C A O L has had to speak. I think just procedural question for me, do we have to vote down the current motion prior to to moving on to this motion?
Mister Mayor, that was going to be my point exactly. What councillor Snatch is doing is uh suggesting um a an alternative motion that's a hundred and eighty degrees from what's on the floor. So should that be the case? Madam Clerk, I I believe that if council had a desire to move forward with councillor Snatch's perspective, you have to defeat what's on the floor. There is a motion on the floor. Mister Mayor, uh somebody moved and somebody seconded the recommendation, which is the resolution that's on the floor.
That's fine then.
Okay, so we'd like to have some more conversation regarding defeating that for initial motion? Okay, all right. Who else has some comments? Go ahead councillor Fisher.
Uh thank you councillor to you. Um actually, a lot of uh what councillor Snatch has said, um I agree with in in some regards and in other regards, not so much. I'm not sure that I'm prepared at this point to cancel this program in its entirety. However, I also feel that preemptively, when councillor Snatch has a copy of the draft budget, none of us have seen this yet. We don't actually know what's in store coming.
I have the two thousand and twenty four budget that's in place today.
My apologies. Um so we don't know what, we don't know what um uh what Manon might be bringing forward to us yet. So to preemptively do and write off the hot increase of four point three percent, I think it's a little bit early. I'm wondering if the motion should be amended that we have Josh look into this to perhaps include for next year's budget to implement in twenty twenty six, therefore allowing us to have a time for public input. Um I know there was a lot of noise on social media. Um I've also received last term and this term lots of interest for expanding the program into the areas of the community where it's not yet implemented.
Uh go ahead, Mayor Clark.
Just to clarify on that, that's what we did last year. We said, let's have it for this year's budget. So we've already done that. We now have the cost. It's either we go ahead or we don't. That's kind of where we're at. Last year, we didn't, we were investigating the cost percent in this year's budget. So that's what's in front of us now. So if we don't go ahead today, it doesn't go ahead, correct?
Yeah, so in order to get the permits in place, we need to start essentially before budget can be passed.
To implement for twenty twenty five? No, but I'm talking about bringing it before now so that it would be included in the budget for twenty twenty five to implement for twenty twenty six. So when this came to us now, this wasn't included in the budget that we passed for twenty twenty four. I want it, I want the opportunity to have a choice to include it for budget twenty twenty five to implement for twenty twenty six.
Um mi- Mister Mayor, just for clarity, uh tha- that's not possible unless there is a definitive direction today. Um based on the resolution that's on the floor, um it will not be included in the budget for uh for twenty twenty five. As Ms. Higgins indicated, she's got about three weeks to be able to pull everything together. I I think you know the impact. At six twenty five, which is roughly an additional four point three uh percent. Um council needs to make a determination whether you want it in or out. Um i- if if it's in, uh that's um a pre-allocation. Uh it'll be challenging uh as Ms. Higgins pulls together the numbers. Uh we don't know what those numbers look like right now, but uh three weeks from now, the twenty fourth of October, um you'll know the numbers. Um it's either in or out. Um the question is, does it uh per councillor Snatch, should this resolution be defeated? Uh does it get turned off or does it come back in another cycle? And I think that's what councillor Snatch was alluding to. It's either not support that for twenty twenty five and come back or or not at all. And I heard councillor Fisher say bringing it back, but it would not be, it would be similar to the other matter, Mister Mayor, that council was talking about uh regarding uh short term rental um fees, to bring that back from a consideration perspective for discussion next year. So coun- council has the the option to be able to support the resolution that's on the floor. Um have an alternate uh resolution should that not be supported, that either pushes it for further discussion in twenty five that would be considered in twenty six or not at all.
And just to clarification on that, if I may, uh trouble is, again, cost will change again next year. I think the purchase of a helicopter is included in this. So I mean, those costs will be updated. We'll be in the same boat again next fall ahead of budget deciding, do we want to do the program or not? Because of the, unless we're going to start doing budgets in August, which I don't think we are, it's always going to come to this decision prior to budget, are we doing it or not? That's that's where we're at.
Uh Deputy Mayor, you you're asking.
I I think in the beginning, I wasn't supportive of this. The the, and Josh, you did a great job on this. This is what we ask you. This isn't staff coming to us making a makeshift work project, so everybody knows. Um but looking at the cost and looking at the percentage increase, I just can't support it. Um a lot of the people that have reached out to me beyond the questions they've asked in addition, I just see the four point three. I can't see us having less than three and a half to five percent increase. And then on top of another four point three, I it's just way too high and I just can't see us justifying that to our taxpayers. So I can't support it.
Thanks. Go ahead councillor Snatch.
I was just on the lines of what the deputy mayor was saying. Uh Manon, do you have a low number and a high number of what you'll be bringing to council at all?
Uh no, I don't. I um didn't receive anything yet from the directors. So until I get everything, I put everything together, I don't have any numbers.
Well, I would probably say that uh I would agree with the deputy mayor that we're probably going based on six years of being here, uh their the staff will probably be asking for like an eight percent increase. We're settled somewhere down around five and you add the four point three and we're back up to a ten percent increase. Um it, that's a lot of money. I've had actual people just tell me that they they just can't afford it. They they just cannot afford it. Not everybody here is on the waterfront. Not everybody, you know, is living in uh there are some properties out there that this is uh are not some properties. There's some residents out here that need this money uh in their pocket. So I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, no, I've heard similar things, you know, and and without even having the hard number rather, but being a percentage. You know, I've got some people that I know pay two thousand a year in property tax and some people that pay eighteen thousand dollars a year in property tax. So the cost of this program would vary greatly between residences and and if I, yeah, every single email I've received is not in support, so I wouldn't support this either. Go ahead councillor golf.
Um I think there's a a mistake that's been talked about a few times here, right? It doesn't matter whether your property taxes eighteen thousand dollars a year or twelve thousand dollars or two thousand dollars a year. It's an increase of eighty one dollars and some odd cents per property. No?
No, because it's no longer going to be a special area charge. It's going to be, it'll go to taxation. We can't do a special area charge throughout the entire township. It's only for a certain area, it can be a special area charge.
Okay, then I was mistaken.
Yeah, thanks. I believe that you had sort of gave that number as an average in that initial report, right?
Yes, yeah, I was to to try to compare what it was existing to what it it may go to. But because we're going to the entire township, it can no longer be a special area charge for a certain area.
Right, yeah, thank you. Go ahead councillor Bell.
Thank you. I just want to weigh in as well. So um I we never did discuss it at budget budget twenty four last year and that's how we got here. So it's been a lagging um report coming back, which is, it it makes it hard for for staff to be able to do the job when when we weren't definitive with um our direction, I don't think, because we just deferred and it deferred. And then so it's taken a long time to actually get to where we are today. And so over the course of this, a little over a year now, we never did do an engagement piece. So right now, I I don't, I wouldn't support it for two reasons. The first reason clearly is the cost. Um but then the second reason is that we haven't done any engagement to find out what residents want. So anecdotally, some people are in support, others aren't. Yes, I can read the social media posts as well and I see the same thing. Um we have a a number of people who support the program and a number who don't. Uh even the mayor uh commented that he'd love to live in an environment where he was mosquito free, if that were an option. So I think um a- and, you know, we haven't talked about the health impact of what mosquitoes may potentially carry. I mean, right now, no, we're not facing a West Nile virus or any of those other things. But I think the motion, this motion, I wouldn't support, but that isn't to say that I wouldn't support. Um I I I wouldn't turn my back on the notion of being able to expand the program at some point in time. Um my hope was always that it could get expanded um community by community where it was appropriate. I know Josh, based on their, Mr. Kavanaugh, based on the report, that may not be the the best method of doing it. But the way I look at that is not, not so different than the way I look at roads, for example, where you have your tenure roads plan. Um we would receive your counsel and accept your advice on which roads would get um uh surfaced at any time. And it would be the same thing with the community safety zones. I suspect we're not going to be sitting around this council table saying, hey, go put the camera in my neighborhood because that would be inappropriate. Um but we would rely on you to tell us what neighborhood that the camera would go into. So I would hope that, you know, as this unfolds, and it may not be today, but maybe there's an opportunity moving forward where this could be implemented neighborhood by neighborhood and the program would merely be run through infrastructure, who would advise which neighborhood to start uh as the next expansion and so on until all areas were serviced. But I don't think we can ever get there without finding out what our communities would really want. So I think for me, I would defeat this motion. Um but I probably would say that we're not going to throw this whole notion away. We we just know that there's reasons why mosquito programs, uh larva sighting programs are a good thing. So that's that's from my take on it.
Thanks. Okay, so then what we, oh, sorry, go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, just to note on the expansion to do it incrementally, we we have talked about it in the past and it is extremely difficult. Um just because to define those areas, I know with the current program, we have it defined one way, but to try to def- define it incrementally going forward, where do you start? And no matter where you start, it's not going to be where everybody wants it to start. Um I think, looking forward, yes, to get some public input on it to see if there is an interest for the rest of the township. And kind of go from there, so.
Go ahead councillor Snatch.
Yeah, just a clarification, when the mayor said that it includes buying a helicopter, that is not for the mayor. And that is for the company that is going to provide services. You're still have to drive to the hunting cap, sir.
So we can do road patrols.
All right then, so do we feel uh ready then to uh vote on this then? Okay, that we approve the aerial larva sighting program for twenty twenty five. Oh, sorry, that we receive report ID fifty one twenty four and that we approve the aerial larva sighting program for twenty twenty five and pre-approve the budgeted amount of six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that will be funded by taxation. And that staff start working on tendering and permit applications for the twenty twenty five application. All in favor?
Sorry, I just have a question though, because we still would have to amend the emotion or emotion, motion, because we still have to receive the report, even if we don't take the and that's, right?
We will do that after this motion if it doesn't pass.
Okay, all in favor? Of of
Of the motion.
I am in favor of the motion, yes. Yes, yes.
Okay, uh all opposed? Thanks, that's defeated. Um how do we go forward with just receiving the report?
So now councillor to you, what we'll do is that we'll need a mover and a seconder, that we receive report ID fifty one twenty four.
Okay, all in favor? First and second?
To add an amendment to that, if I may.
Oh, okay.
And that we proceed to do a survey to the township to see what the interest is. Uh I guess the number we'd have to use is the eighty one dollars per property. That's really the only one that people would relate to. Or would you go, well, we can't even really say a percentage because it'll change next year?
I I wouldn't say an amount because it's going to be a tax increase and it's going to be different for every property because a tax and
Right.
Tax rate is applied to an assessment, so we can provide an individual amount, how much people.
Well, because it'll change next year when you read tender, it'll be a different amount again.
Okay. Go ahead, go go ahead councillor.
Um I just, I I think everybody, I think it would have to be explained in a way that they would take their taxes of what they paid in two thousand and twenty four and multiply it by four point three percent, because that is the number. There it it's not eighty one dollars a property. If you have a ten thousand dollar uh assessment, you will be paying an extra four hundred and thirty dollars a year. And that will influence how people answers, answer um the survey. Um so the other problem I see is that you're going to have maybe two opposing groups running around trying to influence people to do all the surveys. And at the end of the day, are we really going to have concrete information? Because unless it's way over fifty percent, I shouldn't say way over, i- unless it's fifty percent in favor, I wouldn't even slightly reconsider this. But I, so I don't think we need to spend the time on it. That's my point.
Go ahead councillor Bell.
Thank you. I wonder if there's a middle ground, because I know some of the issues that have been raised are, um what is the net impact of the product on the environment and on people's health and those kinds of things. So we have spring inserts coming up and we also have um the brand new revamped bulletin, which is now including a ton more information and it and it's really well done. So thank you for that as an aside. Um but um there might be, part of this might just be an opportunity for education so that people understand, first of all, what the what products are 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 environmentally recommended and which aren't. Um and just an an overall kind of education piece that we could put out with the spring insert, maybe that would talk about how you would be able to control the miss or attempt to control the mosquito population on your own property as well. So I think maybe, I I think there's always opportunities for education, no matter what kind of programs we're talking about. So maybe this is one where there's a little bit of education that goes out in the spring that helps people mitigate in good ways on their on their properties that we can build into this. If we're going to amend the motion anyway, we may as well be uh fulsome and include all the different things that we could do to to help communities combat mosquitoes to the best of their ability.
Thanks, yeah, I agree. Thanks. Yeah, I agree. There is a lot of misinformation out there of, uh, people assuming that this is some kind of, uh, chemical spray. It's not. So it'd be nice if everybody knew exactly, uh, what, what the composition and, and the, um, you know, effects of, of the BTI application would be. Go ahead councillor Snatch.
I would just like to remind, uh, or hope that the members of council when they're voting can see the point that I was trying to make is that even if it's absolutely perfectly safe, even if it doesn't affect the food chain, even if, um, all those other factors come through with flying colors, we can't afford it. That's what I'm trying to get the point across.
Yes, go ahead councillor Fisher.
Thank you. Um, the six twenty five includes the cost of a helicopter for this other company?
Not, no, no. So that would be the cost to their service and they'd have to procure the equipment they require for the service.
So maybe by the time we are ready to make a decision, that equipment would already be procured. So our costs might be different. So there's, that's always an option. Um, I support, uh, mayor's motion about receiving and, um, and start some community engagement just to see if this is something. Um, this is one of the few opportunities we have as a council to actually have a choice in the decision that we make without, um, you know, other legislative threats of, of how we, of how we make a decision. So I think we need to, um, do our due diligence, do the public engagement. Um, I know some members of council have received emails, um, saying absolutely no fans or buts, no way, no thank you. Um, I, I have received both. So because there has been an engagement and interest in both, um, I believe there's been an interest in both for a very long time. Otherwise this wouldn't be coming up over and over and over again, would it just, we'll stop already been. Go ahead mayor.
I've received the same emails. I, I found it interesting that two of the emails were adamantly opposed. I recognize the names. They're within the existing program. So they already have the program.
That's funny. Go ahead councillor Goff.
Like, I, I know cost is a, a big factor here and we're saying that, uh, we can't afford it. But we just turned down a motion where we were having an additional revenue stream that might have been able to actually cover some of this cost.
Go ahead councillor Snatch.
If I remember correctly, including the STRs, the bunny that would come in from the MAT tax would be about sixty thousand dollars, of which only fifty thousand you can spend on municipal projects and the other has to go towards tourism. So are you suggesting that we advertise that we don't have no mosquitoes?
But also there's, uh, Geneva Park now that is now a public entity that
True, so should be four, I said, I said three units, so that'd be four, four.
And the four hundred.
All right, point of order. Let's, let's just get to the vote here. I think we know how everybody feels on this. Uh.
Uh, madam chair, councillor Fisher's point with respect to changing the numbers, Mr. Kavanaugh, please, just before council renders a direction on this and a decision, uh, the six twenty five is predicated on a charge out rate for a piece of equipment. Whether the firm has the piece of equipment or needs to procure the piece of equipment, there's still going to be a charge out rate. Um, Josh, that six two five is in all likelihood, um, a floor for what the cost would be in, 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 in a go forward in twenty twenty five.
Yes, that's correct. So the six twenty five was the rate for twenty twenty five. It was the rate to get the, the product to apply as well as the equipment to apply it. So whether they have to buy a helicopter or not buy helicopter, it, it's not going to change that rate and going forward, there'd probably just be annual increases for, for the services.
Okay, thank you councillor Snatch.
And just going back to the presentation we had earlier about thinking about the long-term effects, you know, it's six hundred and twenty five thousand. Well, if we go ten years out without even inflation, it's over six million bucks and we've seen the capital expenditure, uh, budgets or the capital requirements that we're going to need going forward. Uh, we have to work very, very hard to buy the fire trucks and all that. Six million dollars go a long way to helping us with the and I'll help you with the word I'm looking for. A ten-year capital forecast, thank you.
Or the asset management.
Yes, or the asset management. Thank you. Okay, I'm ready. I have no more comment.
All right. So, uh, where did that leave us as, as voting on just receiving the report or what the mayor had proposed?
That, yeah, that we, I, I, so I've
Would you be willing to add then just some education and maybe in the spring insert or something that helps people understand?
Which, which wouldn't commit us to anything. Okay. All right. So that's all in favor of that motion then? That's passed. Um, is there any unfinished or new business? Oh, go ahead. Put on your mic.
Or not to this. As far as the public knows, council just approved it, but they don't know that I Yeah, so they don't know which individual vote doesn't matter, or is it going to be in the minutes who's opposed to this?
No, it won't be in the minutes unless someone pulls it for the, unless someone makes it a separate report for separate schedule for the committee, the whole report. And then they can have a recorded vote at council.
Okay, thank you.
Your mic, mayor Clark.
No. Correct.
I'm sorry, I thought my mic was on.
No, in council.
Right. So the only motion that will appear at council now is that we commit to a survey. And and information, yes.
Yes. But yeah, you, uh, councillor to you, we need a mover and a seconder.
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting that. Go ahead, moving, uh, councillor Goff seconding, um, councillor Bell. And all in favor of, of that then? Okay, all opposed? Uh, councillor Snatch. All right, that's passed. Uh, is there any unfinished or new business? Seeing none, back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I'm going to try and push through if we can finish at least the open part of the agenda before we break. So we'll go to planning and development services, uh, councillor Fisher. There's the three items there.
Yes, thank you, mayor. There are, you're correct. There are three items on the agenda. The first item on the agenda today is environmental registry of Ontario proposal ERO number zero one nine eight nine four five, aggregate resources act, LCP quarry limited fifteen oh six and sixteen forty six, highway twelve and two four four zero and two five three zero concession road one Brecken. The recommendation is that council receive report BP thirty eight twenty four dated September eleventh, twenty twenty four regarding the application submitted by LCP quarry limited for a license under the aggregate resources act to operate a quarry below the water table being ERO number zero one nine eight nine four five. And that council directs staff to submit the attached comments on behalf of council. Um, the reports here, I did ask, um, our planner Jennifer Stong to be on, but if there's any comments while she's here, so.
I was just going to move it to start with.
Oh, yeah, let's move it. All right. So mayor and councillor Goff. Thank you. Uh, mayor, did you have a question first?
I was gonna say, I, this is kind of irregular. They're applying for the license. They haven't even got the zoning yet. Like, I support the motion because this protects us in the case that the quarry does go ahead. We're going to want all these things in place. It just seemed odd to me that the license is being applied to prior to the zoning application even being processed.
I'm sorry. Am I, am I muted?
No, you're good.
Okay, sorry. Um, so through the chair to the mayor. So it is not uncommon for the applicant of a quarry to apply through the aggregate resources act process at the same time as the land use planning application. These two things, although they are separate, can occur concurrently. So we were, we received the, um, the notice of the ERO and it is a public process. This, this relates to the public information session that was held, I believe it was last month um, in Edney by the, by the applicant. Now residents and council and, and circulated agencies can submit comments about the aggregate resource act license process itself, which is what is before council today.
Did you want to speak further on, on your report or would you like me to open it up to questions?
Um, the report just sort of goes over, you know, what the, what the draft official plan right now says to put in for comments for the, for the aggregate resources act. Uh, this is the opportunity for council to submit additional comments outside and in addition to those standard comments if they deem fit. And, uh, we'd be happy to, to edit the letter and, uh, bring it back for ratification. The comments are just due by October seventh. So we would need to have, have it, uh, decided before that day, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you. I'm sure there's lots of questions. Okay, councillor Snatch.
Yeah, what I don't like about this letter is that it almost looks like we're saying we approve this when we've all recently signed a moratorium on, on quarries. So, um, or at least that was our intention or desire that we don't, uh, receive any more quarries because of the huge uh, all the issues that are related. So I don't like the idea of sending in a letter until they've basically done their official plan amendment because, um, we have to see what's happening at that process first. So, um, I read this and it just sounds like, okay. And then I get falling into the trap that's saying, okay, well, if they are going to get the zoning, then why aren't they, why don't we have all the conditions in here of the, of what we did with the Fleming quarry with the other OLT hearing where they ruled that there must be, you know, traffic lights in place, there must be licensed blasters in place, there must be, and I can't even remember councillor to you, you may remember. But if we do have to respond, I would say that it has to include absolutely everything, not just what we've mentioned here.
Can you comment on that? Jen?
Um, so
Oh, my bad, I'm hearing you.
No, I'm sorry. Um, I'm just reading it on my other screen at the same time while I'm talking. Um, so the letter does note, you know, that, that we are currently reviewing the official plan and zoning by amendment application. The language can be edited as council sees fit, if they prefer it to be stronger. If there's additional considerations that, uh, the council would like to see in this letter, we are happy to update it. Uh, I just, I wrote the letter based on what the official plan specifically says, and at this point, council can, can do any additions to it as you see fit. So we're happy to take your, your feedback.
Thank you. There's a lot of hands up. So I'm going to go in order councillor Goff.
Thank you, uh, councillor Fisher. Um, I'd like to see something put in with, uh, for dust suppression. I know it's not mentioned there, but, uh, I know that's a very common uh, issue that we have with quarries. Some of them do a better job than others with dust suppression and, um, I'd like that to be in this. Also with, uh, actual cleanup of the road on the, because they're going to be coming out on the second concession. Uh, maybe we should actually make sure that they clean that portion or have the ability to clean, to stop tracking it out onto highway twelve. Uh, and maybe, I don't know if we want to even talk about, uh, asking them to pave the second because we know if there is a an accident on highway twelve, they're going to be going along forty seven and coming up the second concession. No, they're not. Okay.
Thanks, Josh. That, that's all posted, no tracks. But we did, did include in the initial consultations that the second be upgraded to the point of their entrance, uh, from highway twelve, so.
Councillor Bell?
Thank you. I, I just, I, I maybe I'll ask Jen, um, Stong to, to speak to this. I, I think the, the moratorium and then this application are two different matters. And so they're two different pieces. So the moratorium speaks to what the province may or may not do in the future. And then when, and, and if you're advocating as a municipality, that's separate. This application though would still have to be tested on the merits of whatever, uh, procedures, processes and policies are in place today. So I think um, just when we're looking at the application, we just have to keep the two things separate. Not that I don't think the moratorium is an important piece. Um, and, and of course I've read the auditor general's report like everybody else has. So I think, you know, talking about that it just has to be a separate piece from what this application is, um, right now. So that was one thing. And then before, before you speak, I'll just wanted to say to, um, to councillor Goff's, uh, concern about, uh, paving surfacing highway or concession too. Sure, except for, and then also they have to maintain it thereafter because we wouldn't want to put it on the infrastructure depart, department to maintain it. So it wouldn't just be surfacing it, it would be surfacing and it's all yours to take care of moving forward. But that would be, I would just want to modify it a little bit, that's all.
Do you, would you have a question for Jen?
I just, I, I guess really from a, I'm just saying from a policy, uh, perspective, would not the moratorium conversation be separate from this? I mean, we still have to look at this application separate from the, the moratorium. I know you included it and I know why it's there. But I, I just, I guess I would want you to just speak to, are they indeed two separate pieces? Because I believe that they are.
So from this is kind of a dual hat situation. So from a land use planning perspective, um, there's policies, you know, for the land use planning application and that will include the traffic impact. And they have submitted a traffic impact study and it will deal with the improvements of the roads, um, haul route agreements, so on and so forth. Um, when it comes to the environmental registry posting for the aggregate resources act license, this is where our official plan provides, you know, sort of a list of the generic, um, comments that should be put into the site plan to protect the interest of the municipality. Plus, you know, if, if council wishes to add additional information such as the moratorium, which that is a motion that was passed sort of under clerk. So it's, it is separate from my land use planning purview. Um, and I, I, maybe I would defer this back to clerks or, or CAO Dunn as to whether or not this would indeed be the appropriate time to bring up the fact that council has passed this motion through the ERO posting. Just because I don't know that that moratorium necessarily would fit in a land use planning decision, uh, which is why it was included in this report to bring it to, back to council's attention that this motion had been passed, uh, roughly two years ago.
Madam chair, if I could, um, Ms. Stong, thank you. And, um, councillor Bell was talking about two decision points. I believe there are three. And Ms. Stong, you were talking about the, the planning process that is concurrent with the EBR posting. Um, two, two separate concurrent processes. In the report, there was also a link. Uh, in fact, it was removed just as a hyperlink and added to the report. Um, from a detailed perspective regarding that moratorium, I do believe it would be worthwhile for council to flag that in the correspondence that goes to the EBR. I think that's why that information was in, uh, the staff report, the way it was prepared. So I think there's three things. Two are concurrent and one, there's been a position of the municipality. Uh, you have to submit based on policy and, uh, the plans that are in place. But don't lose sight of the opportunity to highlight in the EBR, uh, response that decision of council, the previous decision of council. And then how that intersects, uh, with the, the concurrent work, uh, Ms. Stong on the, the planning application process. But the province wants to hear through that portal what the disposition of council on this, um, matter is. And councillor Snatch, if you don't provide a response, uh, then there's no record of the concern from the municipality. So I, I would suggest there does need to be a response. Um, I would suggest council consider, um, ensuring Ms. Stong that that, uh, that attachment, the moratorium, uh, resolution is flagged as well. But there's three buckets from an information perspective.
Thank you, CAO Dunn councillor to you.
Thanks. I've got a bunch of notes. I hope that's okay. So I, I know from previous experience, uh, in my life before council that uh, in, in, uh, challenging a quarry, a letter from the munis- Sorry. Uh, I, I, I know that from my, my, my previous, uh, life before council, I know that, um, in challenging a quarry, a letter from the municipality certainly carries a lot of weight. Um, so I think we would be smart to, to send one, but I am just wondering because it does seem a little like, like the mayor pointed out that we hadn't yet, um, applied for the, that they hadn't yet come before us, um, for the zoning change. Um, is there going to be another opportunity to, um, send a letter, whether it's through the MNRF, that one? Just, just to make sure that we can respond to every opportunity that comes up, not just, not only through the ERO, but through the one, I think there's a forty five day deadline with the MNRF. I'm not sure when that kicks in. Um, and that, okay, so and, and carrying on from that. So just regarding the moratorium, I also agree that yes, we should absolutely include that in a letter, but I, I am curious though as to, I mean, here we are, you know, um, with another quarry application and it's just sort of made me wonder, given the fact that we have signed on to support uh, this moratorium on gravel mining, does, does this moratorium have any teeth whatsoever? Um, and then lastly, uh, the, the items that I would want included in the, uh, letter would be, uh, we came up with a, a really good agreement compromise with, uh, Fowler with, uh, there's a
Very full some traffic safety plan. And they also agreed to create a community liaison committee. And I'm I'm hoping that that can be within um the scope of our letter. Thank you.
Is there anything, I know you're taking notes there, Jen, but is there anything that you would like to respond to and address before I move on to questions and comments?
I don't have any uh, uh, anything further to add at this point. I I know that the deadline for this license registration through the Aggregates Resources Act is October seventh. So making sure that we get the comments in uh now would would uh would be wise. Um, so I will just, I'm going to write down everything that's to be included and then we can refine the letter and and bring it back to council for consideration on the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, um, I I guess maybe I skipped over, but what is the current zoning of this property?
So currently, the zoning of the property is rural and agriculture. And they do have applications, complete applications in for um, to to redesignate and rezone to mineral aggregate extraction. And that we just haven't had the planning meeting yet. So there's been one, one review of the file with comments returned back to the applicant. And then uh once, once we get to the the proper point, then we'll we'll proceed with the public meeting and more information at that point.
Just to follow up, um, I I guess just looking at the size of this, we're talking about almost four hundred acres. This is a massive site. This isn't small. Like a hundred and fifty-one hectares is is huge. I think it's around three hundred and seventy, three hundred and fifty acres. So I guess my concern is that I I think similar to Counselor Snatch, I think we need to know that. We are against further quarries in the township, but if this does go through, I would like to see many caveats added to it.
Mayor's next.
Yeah, I was just. I I agree with everything said here, and it is rural in our mapping. However, this area is identified by the province as prime aggregate, correct? And it's on the provincial map as a protection zone for aggregate. So the province recognizes this as quarry ground, but you're right, we want to make sure the right. Position is in place to protect the citizens of the township.
Oh, great. Start again. All right, uh, Counselor Snatch.
Yeah, I still think this letter sounds like we're giving them our consent. Maybe what we should do is do something like, um. Um, we have received your applications, township's position that this is, you know, for rural and agriculture. Um, and that uh the council has signed a moratorium, which we basically. And then we go back and I think would have to take some time, maybe from our lawyer. But I remember in the Fleming Quarry, we only fought on three items. Because we only collected three hundred thousand dollars from the residents on the street. That's a lot of money. Uh, but they donated the money, but we, there was about seven issues that we wanted to, but we just didn't have the money. So not only the three that we basically won on at the O L T, but the other four that we didn't have the money to question. Dana, do you remember what the other four are that we never even brought in expert witnesses?
Environmental, uh hydrogeological, um, noise.
Yeah.
Um, and I think also we had hoped for a a dust study, but then as it turned out, we were informed by the county that one wasn't required under the.
Yeah, closing of roads uh without permission, et cetera. So I think the Fleming Quarry O L T. Um, plus the four issues that weren't brought up at the O L T should be included in this letter. Um, and just to say, if council made your decision to uh change this to aggregate. Then all of these things will have to be considered, plus many, many, many more.
I I don't like the letter the way it is.
Jen, is there controls under site plan application um for some of the requests that council's asking? Or is this the appropriate time um to include in the, I mean, of course, now is the appropriate time too. But just for, it maybe assurances, maybe not, maybe it'll be scary, but um at site plan control, like what provisions are required? And what provisions can we include?
So um, just for a point of clarity, the letter that's drafted was, is just a base letter. Um, I I didn't wish to put words in council's mouth. Um, I was drafting the the comments based on what is there from the township policies in terms of the standard comments that we put in. With the intent of, you know, the letter being massaged and formed a- as as council wishes. Um, and then some of the concerns, you know, with things like traffic and noise. And and those types of things are dealt with through the land use planning application. However, bringing those items to the attention of, you know, the ministry through this process is is also important. Um, we can, you know, base the words strongly in terms of, you know, we we feel it's premature to be giving exact. You know, concerns about the license because we haven't, we've only gone so far in the land use planning application. However, you know, these are the base things that we really want to make sure we have on the notes of the site plan. If it were to be approved through the Aggregates Resources Act. But with the number of quarries that we have in the municipality, here is the list of of main concerns that we have. Um, that we would like to see addressed through the licensing process. Um, and just to open kind of that communication and and sort of say, this is what we're saying for now. And and we may, you know, have more concerns later, once we get further into the review of of our processes as well.
Thank you, um, Counselor Bell.
Thank you. So I I didn't think that the scope of this letter was to include the things that would happen at planning. But if that's the case, um, there is another comment then that I had received, which is. Why would the, this applicant or this proponent be permitted to work on the site uh before or our our? Noise bylaw kicks in. So ours is six thirty A M. And uh this proponent wishes to begin at five thirty A M. So I probably would recommend that if if it were to move forward. The 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 bylaw would be respected and work would start at six thirty in common with other works that happen in the township.
And and further to that, we, the township has passed a operation of quarry bylaw. And the proponent has been provided with with that, which includes the restriction of of certain hours of operation as well.
I I I think, sorry, Jen, I I know, and I I guess I'm saying, um. I just have already had the feedback that that's not uh optimal for the, for the community. Um, so they would prefer to see it in line with our noise bylaw versus that bylaw. So however that works, I'm just bringing it because it was brought to me.
Thank you. Uh, do you have a comment? Thank you. Okay, yeah, because we're going to finish off our circle again, Counselor To You.
Thanks. I I don't have all of the, the entire list of studies in front of me. Um, uh, Jen, but th- thank you so much for including all of the points possible from the official plan of where we could comment. I appreciate that. That saves us all a lot of time in digging. I do understand that you've just drafted sort of a framework, so thank you for this opportunity. But I'm just wondering, because this is one of the things that sort of struck uh that the Fleming Quarry Neighborhood Group late in the game. Was the absence of a social impact assessment. And is that going to be included with this application? And if not, whether it happens at the planning portion or with, or is that something we can include within this letter to the E R O?
We can, council can certainly add that to the letter. A social impact assessment is not part of the land use planning process.
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Do you really like to add that in, please? I don't know if you heard that whole comment. Thank you, Jen. Um, okay, going around. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Ms. Dong, um, r- really good um, a comment and dialogue with members of council. Uh, there's two takeaways, uh, Jennifer, that I think are important. One, uh, flagging uh your commitment to be back before council on the twenty-third of September, the next council meeting. So that it can be presented, uh, submitted, uh, prior to that, uh. Uh, you've got help there, Ms. Dong. Um, and that, um, it would be presented, uh, submitted, uh, to um. To the E R O. Uh, Jennifer, I think the other thing that's really important is we've got a very short window. Uh, but I think Counselor Snatch's suggestion is important as well. Mister Yurt had carriage on the previous file and the refined draft. Um, should receive some input from from Mister Yurt before that comes back before you. And and understand, Ma- Madam Chair, it 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 will be an open process. Uh, certainly, our conversation with Mister Yurt can rely on those privileged conversations regarding uh the the last file. But the letter will form part of a public record. And uh, Ms. Dong, I I believe you've got everything that you need, um, including your two I C. That will help uh refine the letter. Uh, he disappeared. Um, uh, i- i- is it doable? It's the eleventh of September. Um, you've got a week and a bit to be able to get that uh finished uh comments from Mister Yurt. So that, uh, Ms. Connor, I can't remember what Friday is, um, before the twelfth, eighteenth, isn't it? Um, so that it it has to go live in the agenda on the eighteenth. Is that doable, Jennifer?
Yes, I can do that.
I think she was nodding yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I can do that. Sorry, it was a delay.
Um, so I just want to be clear, C A O Dunn. Do, is there an amendment of the motion required to take action to make sure that this is circulated with our solicitor?
No, not at all. We'll take it as direction, Madam Chair. That's uh, uh, why I raised. Uh, I I I thought that was a really good point from the counselor.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Um, Jen, before you leave us and we make our decision on this, I just was hoping that maybe you can take a time. Because I know this is um, very interesting for for the members of public. We've heard, um, I've heard and I can probably speak with confidence that all members of council have heard from. Different community members in different communities, close and not geographically close to the area. And I know that there is a link in the report that you provided for the E R O posting. Um, for uh residents, um, public to take a look at and provide comments. But I was just hoping that as a matter of public record, you can talk about um, how to access that link. And and that, uh, what is available to our residents during this process.
Sure. Uh, so the the link is available in the report to click on to submit the comments. As well as the printed version of the the actual posting that kind of outline outlines the process. Um, this is the sort of appealable process uh of of the license. Uh, with the recent changes to the Planning Act, the appeal uh processes are sort of restricted on the land use planning perspective side of things. And uh, and there's also direct, you know, contact information and uh and the website for the development itself. From and hosted by the developer where residents can reach out and and try to get clarification on some of their questions. And the processes through the A R A, um, A R A process through them as well.
Thank you so much. Okay, so is there any further questions or comments on this report? So the recommendation is that council receive report B B thirty-eight twenty-four dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Regarding the application submitted by L C P Quarry Limited for a license under the Aggregates Resources Act. To operate a quarry below the water table being E R O number zero one nine eight nine four five. And that council directs staff to submit the attached comments on behalf of council. All in favor?
As amended, I think, because we did add some, as amended.
So my recommendation would be that the um, the first portion of that uh motion remain the same. And then the the second portion would be, and that staff uh provide additional information at the September twenty-third council meeting. Regarding the uh application.
With the additional calls. All right, so the mover and second, are they okay with that change of motion? I didn't, we get one? Okay. Yes, that includes all the ideas that we just talked about. Okay, so all in favor. And that is carried. Uh, second item on the agenda is the O L T appeal. Um, two-two-nine-eight, Highway twelve. The recommendation is that we receive O L T appeal. For two-two-nine-eight, Highway twelve for information. Can I please have somebody put that on the floor? Uh, Deputy Mayor and uh Counselor Goff. Uh, questions or comments at this point? Nope, all right. It is, all right, all in favor. That is carried. And the third and final item on the agenda posted is the O L T decision. Um, O L T dash twenty-three dash zero zero one zero zero two. Two-eight-six-four concession road A that we receive, O L T decision, O L T. Two-three-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-two for two-eight-six-four concession road A for information. Can I have somebody put that on the floor? Counselor Goff, Counselor Powell, uh, no comments and discussion?
More of a comment and a concern. I mean, for those at home, this is a residential lot outside a settlement area. So it's a residential lot in the country that was now been allowed to be severed in three, three lots smaller than what our bylaws allow. And no water. Uh, for potable water, it's a cistern, a big tank under the garage. But it's referred to in here as a water system, water system, water system. I just want to make sure at no point will the water users of Vermera. Be responsible for this water system and be forced to supply water at the same rate that we supply water to our other citizens. This, to me, it's a cistern, it still should be considered as a well, and it's the full responsibility of these folks to buy their water. Independently of any of our water systems is, do we have that assurance? The reason I make that concern is we've had lots of water systems in this township that by default got handed over to the municipality. And now that's formed our water department. So I want to make sure these are private and always will be private so-called water systems.
Through, through the chair to the mayor, um, this was um staff's concern as well. Um, the decision was not obviously what we were hoping for. Um, there is going to be a warning clause as part of a development agreement that is registered on title. And there's also going to be a consent agreement registered on title, all that will reference the decision of the O L T to to approve. Approve the applications. And the the warning clause basically warns and says, you know, this is a cistern. And you're responsible for for filling your own water.
Thank you. All in favor? And that is carried. Um, is there any unfinished or new business? Well, that was pretty easy. All right, thank you. I'm going to pass this back to you, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to break for lunch now. I'm just going to point out that that we finished all the public session, but the rest is all in, yeah. Oh, is there one more? Yeah, we'd know we did them all. Yeah, so everything else is in camera. Uh, Counselor Snatch?
Yeah, um. I'm on some timelines today. Is there any way we can make this lunch break like real short?
Well, I've got to give my staff ample time to eat. I know last time we had a long meeting, you never even got lunch. So can, like twenty minutes?
They're not doing it, they're not doing a council.
They're not doing a, yeah, you don't have to type up future minutes. So kind of a quick work, like one-thirty, can everybody make that turn around or? One-forty, one-four, yeah, half hour, one, yeah, okay, perfect. We will recess. Thank you.
Okay, so I just the committee the whole enter closed sessions with accordance of two thirty nine to B C E F of the municipal act at one fifty P M and we were going to add just an update on one of our other litigation matters while we're in camera. So moved by councillor Gough, second by councillor Fisher, all in favor? That is carried if you want to put us to the breakout room please, Ashley.
Okay.
Okay, we're live. If you can confirm I still have a quorum. I did lose Councillor Schnutch. I had to go, but I still have a quorum, Madam Clerk.
I can confirm you have quorum, your worship.
Thank you. So the first motion has changed, so if I could get a recommendation read for ten point one.
Uh, okay. So the recommendation is that we receive CD twenty-three, twenty-four, and that we direct staff to coordinate the conveyance of the unopened road allowance of budding properties four, 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 two, four, 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 or four, four, three, eight, and four, four, three, two, Plum Point Road, and that the owner, that the township enter into an easement agreement.
Yes. Moved by Councillor Fisher, second by Councillor Gough. All in favor? That is carried. The second one, can I read what's here then?
There was another piece added to this.
Yeah, that's what I thought. There was something added as well, so I'll look free to read.
I think I've captured it, uh, that we received, that we received report ID fifty, twenty-four, and that following consultation with the Snowmobile Association, but be advised.
Perfect. Moved by Councillor Gough, second by the Deputy Mayor. All in favor? That is carried. Uh, that we receive information from John Urt LLP regarding the I-PAC litigation that staff proceed as directed. That one stayed the same. Moved by Councillor Gough, second by Councillor Fisher. All in favor? That is carried. That council receive report BP thirty-nine, twenty-four as information. That's on the concession road A O L T. Moved by again, Councillor Bell, second by Councillor Tu You. All in favor? That is carried. That we receive the information from John Urt LLP regarding the notice of appeal twenty-two, ninety-eight, Highway twelve. At this point, we're just receiving. Moved by Councillor Gough, second by Councillor Fisher. All in favor? That is carried. And then we receive the C A O recruitment update as information. Moved by the Deputy Mayor, second by Councillor Tu You. All in favor? That is carried. And we had one on current court cases. We got an update, yes.
Current litigations, yes, your worship.
And then we, I thought we had a motion for that one that we are.
That we discussed the update on current litigation matters.
Okay, that's the motion at this point. I thought we were going to suggest something that there are no outstanding court cases on the one, but we can get that for the minutes later.
Madam, Madam Clerk, was it not the council receive the verbal update regarding litigation matters specific to bylaw in, pardon me, prosecution matters regarding fines, not associated with bylaws, prosecution matters?
Yeah, with regard to fines, yeah. So moved by Councillor Fisher, second by the Deputy Mayor. All in favor? That is carried. Looking for one to adjourn. Moved by Councillor Fisher, second by the Deputy Mayor. All in favor? That is carried.